I'd like to draw, um, call the meeting to order of the zoning commission, uh, October 7th, 2021.
Thank you, board. I have a staff report for, or I'm sorry, a public notice.
Do you need a roll call first, please?
That's correct.
That's okay.
She's that great as business.
Yes.
Jump right in. We'll do roll call.
Okay.
Ms. Horton?
Here.
Ms. Stalter?
Here.
Mr. Geis?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Okay, next, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
No, second.
All right. Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Ms. Stalter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Okay, we have a hearing notice that's been published, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
All right.
We want to read that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the public notice for case 825, the purpose of this hearing is so that the zoning commission may review and act on a proposed amendment to the Beaver Creek Township Community Development and Risk Department, uh, I'm sorry, to Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution, and it's being proposed by the Beaver Creek Township Community Development and Risk Department. The proposed amendment includes an omnibus update to the township zoning resolution, updating numerous sections of the document. These changes reflect not only improved grammar and readability, but also changes necessitated by evolving community dynamics. Um, and I have a lengthy staff report for you this time.
Okay.
So, if you are ready.
We are ready.
Um, I'm first going to give you just a little bit of informations, an overall summary, and then what I've done is provided essentially a rationale for any substantial changes. Some of them are purely grammar or readability. Um, those aren't mentioned in this breakdown. I am happy to go through it as thoroughly or as briefly as you would like. So, let me just start with this, uh, summary, please. So, the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution's been amended many times over the course of its existence. Um, the best practices in zoning suggest that a periodic review of the zoning language can reduce confusion and misunderstanding in the zoning rules. Um, poorly worded sections can be made less ambiguous and their meaning more clear. Uh, rules that have been challenged multiple times at the Board of Zoning Appeals can be reconsidered. An omnibus update presents an opportunity to make the resolution a more effective and useful document. That's what we want to do. So, staff has been working together, uh, to address a number of issues within the township zoning resolution, which are reflected in the proposed changes we're bringing before you for consideration. Um, these changes have been reviewed by Green County Regional Planning, uh, their recommendation, uh, they made some recommendations to our initial language, and we made those changes. They're reflected in what we're presenting you tonight. Um, and it's been recommended by, uh, to the zoning commission by the full commission. So, after those changes were made, we resubmitted, they reviewed, and then offered their, uh, full recommendation. So, staff developed a companion piece, and we'll look at that in a little bit to help kind of go through the changes as I explained. Um, except for those most obvious grammar and spelling corrections, uh, the document will help anyone reviewing the proposed changes to understand the reasoning, why, why we want to make these changes. Um, so, our recommendation to you is for approval of this omnibus update. We, uh, brought it to you, so it's obvious that we recommend your approval. Um, we do think that these changes reflect evolving best practices in zoning administration. We also think that, um, they're necessary. Um, and changes, there, many of them are suggested by repeat variants granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, so staff will continue to engage in omnibus updates on a regular basis. It might be yearly, it might be every two years, we're not sure yet. But we know that this process is important, we want to make it a regular part of our operations. Um, are there any questions about that before I move into the specific changes that we're recommending? Okay. Um, so what I have done.
Oh, a nice picture. I like the, uh, neighborhood you choose.
That's a good neighborhood, right?
Yeah. How long?
Basically, we've amended several articles, or we're seeking to amend several, several articles. Um, what I would like to do is kind of bring this companion piece side by side with the proposed changes. So, just let me do that very quickly. Okay. So, the reason I want to look at them side by, side by side is I think it will kind of help as we look at the rationale to look at the changes themselves. And, um, we'll need to do it like that. All right, so, in Article 5, which is where the first changes occurred, um, it's the article that deals with agricultural, uh, I'm sorry, with single-family residential. Um, the main focus, the, the major changes that we've made are, are these. We, in this section here, we removed the phrase "prime agricultural soils" as something that is, um, the intent of ES 2.5 districts to protect them. Um, that is frankly not the, what a estate lot does. It doesn't protect agricultural soils, it builds a house on them. Um, and so, we wanted to be more transparent, but also it reflects the growing move towards more development in the township. Um, so that is a substantial change that we're making here. Um, we've also added as a list of uses, of permitted uses, uh, short-term rental of properties, AKA Airbnb-style rental agreements. However, the length of that rental term must be at least 60 days. So, it is not for the type of, they're, you know, you're not, uh, allowed the use of Airbnb on these kind of weekend at a time. Uh, it would be more for long-term. For instance, if a, someone who was working at the base for a couple of months needed a place to stay, an arrangement like that would be acceptable. Um, this was based on, not only, I mean, we have to be realistic about, uh, the use of homes as Airbnbs, it's a more common phenomenon, but also, uh, I think this is a great compromise, talking with my township administrator, between what's acceptable to the trustees and what is, um, going on in the world. So, uh, we made this compromise of a minimum 60-day lease.
Question?
Yes.
How did you come up with 60?
So, it seemed like an acceptable length of time that it would discourage the, how do I want to put it? The more, or the less desirable Airbnb, um, aspects, if that makes sense? Um, the kind of short-term use that can disrupt neighborhoods and their function. Whereas, somebody who would be staying for a minimum of two months would be, at least in some small way, settling here for a reason, for, for a length of time. Be less likely that they would be engaged in kind of, let's party for a weekend, tear up the house, and then get out of here.
So, I get that as two different strings.
Yeah.
And the example you gave, I could imagine there would be a number of opportunities where someone might come into the area and rent a house, whatever, and maybe, um, 30 days might be more reasonable. TYS is an example, coming from homeowners' patients, another, uh, two, two months is a pretty long period, isn't it? I'm just curious why, why you settled on that versus something slightly less restricted?
Again, it was just something that, between discussing it with the township administrator and trying to get a sense of the trustees' comfort level with Airbnb as a use in residential districts, this was kind of what was, um, thrown around as a, this is an acceptable length of time that we can look at it. Um, if it seems like it should be shorter, one recommendation I have is when we go to the conditions section to maybe say, you know, everything looks good, except I think maybe this section should read for 30 days instead of 60.
Yeah, I don't know what's right here. And then that, Max, I have a question, you know, on a, it says when the owner does not reside there, what about, I know Airbnb has a category where people can rent out rooms.
You said that, so.
How are you going to deal with that? I mean, I just, I'd have a hard time with that, at all.
A hard time with what, sorry?
The whole.
With the, with the use in general, you would recommend.
In a residential area, I mean, that's, I can understand if you're in a condominium complex, but we're imposing conditions on private owners.
Private ownership, that's what I think, too.
That's, I, it's difficult for me to.
Well, I think it goes into a whole different aspect, though, when you're, in my opinion, running a business from your home, too. I mean, that's technically going to be, your house is using it as a business. So, and we had this experience in our neighborhood, where we actually had someone who had an Airbnb. He was in the process of coming here to app it, and wasn't in the house, but rented out the house for weekends, weeks at a time, and it caused quite a, quite a stinking neighborhood.
And I, I can, I appreciate that, if that's in a homeowners' association, but to blanket this over on all R1 residential properties in the township, I think it's something that should be better addressed from, uh, the planning stage, as far as when it development goes in. I mean, leave it up to the homeowners' associations to vote that if they're in, and give the residents a chance to speak on behalf or against it. But to put that in a blanket over all R1 residential in the township, I have a.
So, are you suggesting that the homeowners' association cannot be more restrictive than this?
No, they could be in the real way.
They could be, I'm just saying, we don't have, I don't think that we should have a blanket over all residential property, R1 zoning in the township that you.
Just saying, the example you gave probably doesn't stand logic, because if the homeowners' association can say that doesn't apply, and they put further restrictions, that's not going to, that's not going to allow that in our neighborhood.
No, I think he's saying he doesn't want this at all.
I, I hear what you're saying.
Oh, okay.
I hear what you're saying, but the example you.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, in a kind of point or whatever, if the homeowners' association decides that we're not going to allow Airbnbs.
Then that doesn't.
That's assuming you have an association that has the power to do that.
Right.
At this point, we don't right now, I mean, just to go through what we're going through, we're actually trying to add amendments to our, which we don't have, covenants and bylaws, so.
Right.
And that's assuming neighborhoods have associations anyway, so I'm not.
And that's what my whole point is, if you're in a neighborhood that doesn't have an association, there may be a reason that you're in that neighborhood.
That, that could be a good reason.
You know.
The homeowners' associa- association should be protecting them.
Should be protecting what?
From that happening, if the homeowners didn't want that to happen.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But it can impact us.
So, so. But the, the way that it's stated here, that applies to all, even neighborhoods that don't have a homeowners' association.
That's the real.
That's my concern.
So, I think at this point, we're still in a place where we're listening to the staff report, and we can have discussion later, if that's okay.
Okay, sorry.
All right.
Got sidetracked.
We'll just make a note of Article 5.
Yeah, Article 5.
Yep.
Article 2.
Article 5, number 2.
Thank you.
Um, so, the next change that we seek to make, and you'll see this one through many of the articles, is, um, basically, we've tied, uh, let me find it here. So, what used to read as a set number of stories or height in feet is now a, it's now just tied to the Ohio Building Code. That was a recommendation from Regional Planning and Randy Grojan, our, our director. Um, if that changes, then let's meet that, and if it's higher than two and a half stories, which it is at this point, uh, it's, it's much higher, um, then why don't we allow buildings to that height so long as they're fire-safe? It's kind of the reason from there.
So, this does two things, it ties it to the Ohio Code, that, that way, if it changes, you don't have to keep changing it.
Correct.
My overall question, look at the table here, is this less restrictive or more restrictive?
My understanding is it's less restrictive.
Less restrictive.
Yeah. Um, for instance, when those height requirements were, were first put in place, fire ladder technology wasn't what it is now, and, and the ability to fight fire safety at a height above that was almost, is either nonexistent or much more difficult. Now, you can fight a fire at a, at a higher elevation safely, so.
Such that the residual restrictions ended up being arbitrary?
Yeah.
You know, 35 feet, why not 37? Why not 40? Why not 26? So, when you get into arguments like that, it's better to rationalize it and, and compare it to a standard of some sort that has a rational basis.
So, those are the significant changes you saw, and you'll see this throughout. You'll see a couple of, you know, change marks here. For instance, this is like a, add a hyphen to an eight-foot high, you know, just some grammar things. Uh, we don't mention those again. Um, so that is all for Article 5. I'm going to move on to Article 6, which is our two-family residential. Um, okay. So, our permitted principal uses section, essentially, this section, this number three of, uh, 6.02, in many of the other residential sections, it reads exactly this way, township facilities are allowed with conditions. I, we couldn't for the life of us understand why this one would read any different, especially in a multi-family, uh, district, that there should probably be at least the same conditions as a single-family for township facilities. So, we just matched that to the other residential district language, and basically imposed the same conditions, um, basically that there would be parks, police, and fire departments, um, and that they must meet conditions of Article 18.35, which lists kind of what township facilities, uh, need to do in order to locate in this fashion. And then, again, we changed the height regulations to reflect the Ohio, the Ohio Building Code. Uh, in Article 7, let's get down here. Uh, this very same thing, we tied the building height to Ohio Fire Code, or Ohio Building Code. Sorry, it was originally the Southwest, uh, Ohio Fire and Safety Code, and it was changed to the Ohio Building Code at the recommendation of Regional Planning. Um, so there's the building height change, and then we also changed this language, right? It used to say to a main traffic artery, um, or a TCC-proposed four-lane artery. A main traffic artery is an ambiguous term, and so what we tried to do was just say an existing or proposed four-lane roadway. That way, there's no ambiguity. It's a la- a road with four lanes that's either exist or proposed in a, some sort of plan. So, uh, just trying to remove ambiguous language there. In Article 8, um, so this is our R5, our mobile home residential district. It's not currently applied anywhere in the township, um, but it could be in the future. Um, one thing that we really wanted to change up here in the intent, um, it said that all of these mobile home developments are encouraged to be submitted as planned unit developments, but then later in the document, it said that it shall be developed as a planned unit. So, we just wanted to match that language, make sure it was upfront, that it must be a PUD. And then we moved that clause, it was down here at like number 14 or so, maybe, yeah, lower. Um, it was like 23 or 24, way at the bottom of the list. We moved that to the top, again, to just make sure that as people were just looking at the possibilities, they knew at least that this was a requirement of the district. And, uh, so those were the changes we made to that, Article 8.
That's a great change.
Thanks. Uh, I am going to move now to Article 10. This is our B2 business district. Um, so, we changed in 10.05 here, yard requirements, 10.06. Um, okay, so, this, again, talked about major roads, which is an ambiguous term. I mean, arguably, what road is major or minor, there needs to be some sort of standard. So, this, we changed to classed higher than the minor collector designation, which is a standard. There's a series of road classes all the way up to major collector and highway and all these things. Minor collector has certain traffic amounts and other features that you can, you can point to and say, okay, it's a minor collector, or it's above that in terms of its, um, road designation. So, we just wanted to make that less ambiguous. Um, again, we tied heights. Well, this one actually is, uh, on high-hazard buildings. So, at first, it was just listed on high-hazard buildings. Again, that could be interpreted in a lot of ways, and so we just added as defined by the Southwest Ohio Fire Safety Council Unified Fire Code. This was recommended by Randy Grojan. Let's see, and then in 1010, uh, this is where we, again, put the building heights, changed to Ohio Building Code. And then here in the screening section for business, we basically, it, it already points you to the screening section of our general, uh, requirements. And then it had this extra requirement that we didn't understand, it didn't differ substantially from what was in 18, so we removed it to not be confusing, to make sure there wasn't conflicting with 18.17. Okay, Article 11, which is our B3 business district. Again.
Could you go back to what does 18.17 say, just so I'm clear?
Uh, sure, let me open that up for you. All right, 18.17 is our screening section, so.
See if that will work.
Article 18. Here we go. 18.17.
I'm letting her read it, it's all right.
It's okay, I found it over here.
Oh, okay. Well, yes, so, so basically, it just lays out why and when, and, uh, in what fashion screening is required between various uses. So, we did not see any substantial difference here, uh, and just directed them to, so because right here, number four, talks about screening requirements between non-residential and residential, um, we feel like that fulfills, you know, the, the notice requirements for any district, essentially.
And it's under the business two, B2 district, though, right?
This one, the one we were looking at is B3, um, and that would be a non-residential use. And if it were to a but, a residential use, it would just need to have, screening has defined in 18.17.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, where are we? Okay, so we are now back in Article 11, B3. I'm sorry, you're right, that was our B2 business district, yes. Um, and now we are moving into B3. Uh, we have just a couple of changes. The high-hazard buildings as defined by the Ohio Southwest Fire Safety Council Unified Fire Code. Um, and then there was a reserved-for-future-use section, we removed that. So, those are our significant changes in Article 11. In Article 12, which is our B4 business, uh, that's our highest-density business district. Um, it's listed here as the highway business district. We did the same thing. We talked about high-hazard buildings and defined that, and then we tied the height standards to the Ohio Building Code.
Why do we take the future use out of B3?
Because we currently do not have any future use planned for it. We could not understand what future use might be, and if we do need to add, and it's not an additional article, or it's not something that we couldn't easily rewrite, should we need to add sections, we would do that anyways, I guess is my point. There's, if there's no current need that we know, we'd rather remove it than have it in there. And currently, we don't have any changes planned for B3. Okay, Article 13, which is our office and research park districts. Um, we did change this word inoffensive to aesthetically pleasing. As we looked at it, we tried to figure out what exactly they meant by inoffensive, and it's very difficult to determine that, it's very subjective. Aesthetically pleasing is also a subjective term. But it was clear that that was in there for a purpose, that it was meant to say, in this office and research district, your buildings should look nice. So, we think aesthetically pleasing is the way to do it. Now, we did not try to list any standards for what that might look like. Um, I think that's beyond our purview as a township. So.
I've referenced it before.
We did make some changes about, again, the, the building height. So, it was, again, tied to the Ohio Building Code, and then if we get into, where are we here? Okay. So, we did change a couple of things. These are pretty significant. Um, it used to be that permitted principal uses in, these are research park and then office research park, the permitted amount of floor area in the building devoted to light manufacturing was only 15%. What we know about research firms now is that almost always they're prototyping as part of their research. It's, to think that a recen- a, you know, a research firm, especially one around here, that's typically working in some way, shape, or form with right pat or in that industry, to have only 50% of their space devoted to light manufacturing, I don't know of any that I can think of in our area that don't have significantly more floor space devoted to machines that are prototyping and actually building something. So, we raised that to 40% in the, um, this is the, sorry, hold on.
Max's, uh, light manufacturing department.
Uh, let me go into our definitions section.
If, if it is, then you don't.
I will have to confirm that it is.
I have a second question.
So, hold on just a moment. It's so hard to see.
On the transmission.
There we go.
Definition is three.
Well, let's see. Unfortunately, does not appear to be defined in our zoning.
Did a work search and I didn't find it.
Yes. Is not. That could be something that we could suggest is added to the definition section of our resolution as part of this. I agree. Um, I agree with you, light manufacturing is definitely very subjective. I would say that perhaps because it is so subjective, that I would think about a special work session to really, if we really wanted to define it, we'd need to do some research and, and figure out what's a good definition. But in the sense for you all, our intent is to mean essentially manufacturing that would, I don't know.
Be light?
It's one of those things where it's like, uh, you know it when you see it, you know, I hate to, I hate to bring that old.
You can only make cardboard boxes, no?
No, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a very variable term. It can mean everything from roto- robot prototyping to, like you said, cardboard, corrugated cardboard manufacturer. It does deserve a definition, I believe.
I agree.
Um, but that being said, I do believe that the floor space up, update that we're talking about is something that just matches what we're seeing in the industry, more space devoted to actual building prototypes and things like that. And so, that's in our O1 district. In our research park district, we've actually upped that from 60 to 75%. It was 60, we've upped it to 75. Um, and that's for the same reason. And in a specifically research park, now, office, arguable that they could mostly use it as office space, but in a research park, like for instance, Russ Research Park, those buildings are almost all manufacturing space. There's some office space, but if you look at an MRL or, uh, any of those firms out there, almost, I'd say, good 80%. So, we're, we're getting close to an industry standard here. Uh, that's a PUD, so we don't have to worry about it needing to. That's a P U D, so we don't have to worry about it needing to match our zoning code perfectly. Okay. So thirteen point oh four is our next change here. And we added this, we tried to clear up the language here. I'm just trying to find it here. Okay. So for land occupancy, this just said the structure shall not occupy more than thirty-five percent of the land proposed. So basically what we did was say, okay, the combined area of all structures. They just tried to make it less ambiguous. Let's see. We removed a reference to on-premise signage. Because as we know from a previous case, we cannot make reference to whether or not a sign has anything to do. Frankly, we can't consider the content of a sign when regulating it. Oh, is that right? Changing all the time. We changed in thirteen twelve here. We changed a, something from the nominal ground level to the established grade of the lot. That's a more common phrase. We think it's clearer. We did change that ground sign height in this district is a maximum of six feet. That matches the rest of our business districts. We could not understand why it was only limited to four feet in a research park district. Clearing up some language here again, established graded a lot. And then, so here towards the end, there was a schedule of permitted uses. And what we did was, we want to remove this from this section and then place it along with our other tables of permitted uses earlier in the document for consistency. I, this table was specific to O one, O R P. Yeah.
We did the four foot thing too. We know we did. The six foot.
Gotcha.
We did. That's why we were giggling.
Oh, I see. So we just thought in our mind that the table of uses just belongs with the other table of uses. And I don't, the formatting got messed up in this document, so I apologize here. I did not want to delete it from the document. So let's just do some scrolling. All right. We are now moving on to article fourteen. It's our industrial district. So. I apologize, but this no longer applies. It was asked to be removed as part of regional plannings section, their recommended changes. Because we have, we anticipate, and I'll talk to you about this a little later, actually a new business, a mining district. But until we have it in place, there needs to be a permitted use somewhere. So. In fourteen point oh five. Where'd you go? We wanted to basically just clear up the language a little bit here. All of these were written as a demonstrative sentence. Somebody shall or something shall do this thing. This one was not. It just says submit a site plan. It did not have a, you know, who was to submit it, so we changed that. And then again, this was changed, site plan to be reviewed by any entity having jurisdiction over the parcel, not just the Bubuque Township Fire Department. That's some. Correct. Correct. Let's see here. In fourteen oh eight, we just added this table is, or this section talks about the table of permitted principal and conditional uses, so we just wanted to add the conditional uses here. The high, the high hazard buildings again defining those. And again, removing that table of uses and replacing them in the other. Sorry?
Our, our books aren't matching.
They don't match. So be careful turning your book back, because you don't get it back sometimes. I'm just saying.
I'm hoping that after we pass this.
Nobody give me my book back.
You mean you don't have the changes memorized?
She does, actually.
I do, I, I used to have a pretty good photographic memory, but sometimes it fails me.
There's a lot of reasons why after this omnibus is passed and we, because we'll have to do kind of a full formatting update of the zoning resolution to encompass all this. You all be getting new books. No, even if you.
I just heard you say that.
Even if you don't pass it, we'll still be doing that. We're waiting to do that in case this passes. How about that?
Okay. Continue, please.
Okay. So. We're going into article sixteen here, our agricultural. Our favorite zoning district.
Wait, question. Did you move the other tables behind that table? Are those tables going to a different appendix?
Any tables in these articles are going to be moved to like the, the table of appendix, the appendix best. Got it. Section.
Okay.
All together.
What is the reason for that? Just having it in there?
Well.
Versus having it in with the sections?
Yeah, because what we want to be able to do is have one section of the code where you can look and find the permissible uses for all of the different zoning districts. And that way, you don't have to flip through, you know, various sections of the code to find the one that you're looking for. I think it makes sense organizationally.
For three different tables in three different places.
It's okay, I got it.
The, there's not a whole lot that we changed in the agricultural, but we did make a change. This references churches as a conditional use. And we just changed it to places of worship. It's more inclusive. And then again, we tied the height requirements back to the Ohio Building Code instead. So article eighteen has some changes. That's our general provision section. In eighteen oh one five. We changed main building to principal structure. It's a more commonly used term in the field. I think it's, it's more clear language. In eighteen point oh five four. We again, let's see here. Yeah, we raised the maximum height of accessory buildings to twenty-two feet. And we actually, or I'm sorry, we raised it to eighteen feet and then the height limit can be raised to twenty-two feet on lots of one acre or more.
Question. Is that not defined at all in Ohio Code?
Which?
The accessory building. Height.
The. I would have to take a look, but I know for us, we are allowed to make restrictions on accessory building height. And so it used to be that we've got it currently restricted to fourteen feet. Doesn't matter if you have five acres, doesn't matter if your house is forty feet tall. You can only have a fourteen foot tall.
This is the one essence where we're not going to be concerned at all about the Ohio Code.
It's not that we're not concerned about it, but. No, that's correct. We, the accessory structures are, A, not every lot will have one. And B, we do think that it's, I mean, it's one of those things that the township should be able to decide. Now, because it's only the maximum height that we're allowing in the code is twenty-two feet, which is going to be. Well, but not nearly as tall as most of the homes that, that are going to be seeking a twenty-two foot tall accessory building, right? So that's our logic is any accessory building, well, A. An accessory building shall not exceed the height of the principal structure. That's one of the rules here. So if the principal structure's height is limited to the Ohio Building Code, then so would the accessory structure, essentially by not being able to be taller than the principal structure without a variance.
But didn't we back, I think it was article five, six, maybe, talk about a thirty-five feet tied back to the O F C?
It used to be thirty-five feet. And now it was changed to just, it must be no.
Whatever the code says.
Correct.
Sorry.
This is one of those examples that was, variances would come to the B Z A relatively often.
We must have done, I mean, we have some B Z A members here. You know, I think we probably done.
Four or six of those this year. Variance for? If somebody wants, you know, say they live in a ranch house and they have a motorhome. It's going to be taller than.
They can still apply for a variance to that requirement if they so chose. And that would be one of the things that we would look at, you know, hey, is, is having a taller accessory structure than your primary structure an issue for any reason? There may be a case where it is.
I mean, I'm just thinking of the sixties ranch and then you get a motorhome, but your barn's going to be, that you want to put in a garage is going to be taller than the ranch house.
Right. You know, it's, I mean, this is a standard we find in most zoning codes to not allow an accessory structure to be taller than the primary structure. There is this hierarchy of primary and secondary structures. So that's why you can't get a variance for it, but it would just, you have to take that extra step.
Principal structure. That's the only thing.
The, I mean, the major change here is that we're raising the allowable height. That, that height limit is raised again on lots in, with an acre or more an area. And that we, so this was something that came from the B Z A too. We define how height of that structure shall be measured. There was discussion of whether it should be just based to the peak of the roof or is it based to, is it the established grade of the lot or to the?
Yeah, the only thing I would cover up was just the, the first part of the sentence, you're tying it to the height of the main structure. Whether you have one acre, you can go twenty-two foot or less than eighteen foot. There may be, I don't know. Like I said, if you had, you want to put a garage in for a motorhome or houseboat or something, I don't know that you may be.
Well, it says whichever is less, so the maximum is.
But the attached accessory building or structure within a residential district shall not exceed the height of the principal structure.
Or.
Yeah, or that.
Oh, okay, I didn't see the or there.
Yeah. Yes.
Eighteen feet.
Correct. Yeah. It limits it to eighteen feet. If somehow the principal structure was only sixteen feet tall, it would be limited to sixteen feet. So yeah, sorry if that was confusing.
No.
So if they go for a variance, then their limitation is twenty-two if it's a one acre.
If it's a one acre lot, then yes. They, they wouldn't need a variance to build a twenty-two foot tall accessory structure on a lot with one acre or more. We could just grant the permit if this changed.
Well, it's interesting that you raised it to twenty-two for a larger lot, you didn't tie that back to the main structure.
Oh, I see what you're saying. It does say this height limit, although that doesn't necessarily mean that it has that same clause of, or the height of the structure.
So it's still the height of the structure or?
Correct.
Whichever, twenty-two or whichever.
It is meant to, to mean that. And so if you have a suggested wording change to make that more clear, I'd be glad to include that. Yeah, it's definitely not meant to, to all of a sudden just make it twenty-two and not, yeah.
You got a large lot, give me a twenty-two foot one.
Yeah. Okay. And so let's see, we are at the max, so the maximum size again is another significant change of accessory structures. This is again, something that we have seen a lot in B Z A. I would say, I would say arguably is our most common B Z A variance request is, I'd like to build an accessory structure that's bigger than what you allow. We looked at all these cases. We found that, not only do we look at these cases, but actually this was the result of a, a project by our intern, Cody Pack, who worked with us from Wright State's undergraduate program. We looked at several of the codes, the zoning resolutions of various agencies or municipalities that surround us and said, okay, what are they saying? A lot of them tie their maximum accessory structure size limit to the lot size in one way or another. And we thought that with the variance in lot sizes here in the township, from your typical, you know, quarter acre lot all the way up to five, ten acre lots that are purely residential. We wanted to reflect that those lots have different impervious surface limits and, and things like that. So what we did was, instead of tying it to a specific number of square feet, we tied it to a percentage of the footprint of the main, of the principal structure. And I see now that that needed to be changed to principal structure as well. It's very, I apologize, very difficult to catch everything when you're doing all this. So, but that being said. So what it is, is thirty percent of the footprint of the main building. Or twenty percent of the total acreage of the parcel on which that building sits, whichever is the less. But it does also say that accessory structures shall never cause the total impervious surface coverage of a given lot to exceed seventy percent of the total lot area. So we tried to work in a couple of things. A, you got a big lot. You can have a pretty large accessory structure. That's what we care about is how much impervious surface are you taking up? That's our main concern with these. And so we looked at what a standard limit for impervious surface was and seventy percent was, I think it's a generous limit, to be honest.
In multiple districts?
In, this is our, the, this is.
This is eighteen, right?
Yeah. And I believe your accessory structures, yeah, in, in any residential district. Within a residential district, yes, it does specify within residential districts.
So rather than an arbitrary nine hundred square feet, it's a percentage of the lot size now?
And you say seventy percent is the standard?
It's difficult to identify a standard. What we did was we took a look at all those different codes. Some of them had straight, like we did, you know, eighteen hundred or nine hundred square feet or a thousand square feet. Some of them up the square footage with lot size increases. We wanted to focus on impervious surface coverage and what our understanding and doing the research was that if we maintain a thirty percent open space throughout most of our area, that we would be at least within that safe range of not overloading the impervious surface coverage. Does that make sense? So it's the high end. Seventy percent is the very high end.
And that's what I'm thinking. And in my thought process goes to water flow, right? So. Right. I don't know.
I personally would not.
Lower.
Disagree if this board thought it should be lower.
Well, I don't know what to say. I mean, I could, you know, say fifty percent and I would, I'd just be shooting in the dark. I mean, I don't know. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I think it's important that the number not be arbitrary anymore. And that was goal number one in making this change. Nine hundred square feet. What, whether your lot's a quarter acre or ten acres? Come on, that's, that doesn't make any sense. But I have seen codes, in fact, I administered a code that placed the maximum lot covered at fifty percent and placed a maximum coverage on the required rear yard as well. Meaning, think setback, what's the rear setback in the parcel? You can only cover twenty or thirty percent of that setback, whatever it was. I, I don't.
Well, where my head went with this is if we're going to control the height of something based on the size of the lot, wouldn't it make sense also then to consider?
Well, I think we're controlling the height based on fire code stuff, right?
Well, you're talking about accessory structures, right?
Yeah.
Particularly. It is, we allow a taller accessory structure on a, on a larger lot.
On a larger lot. So would we, see where I'm going with that? But I don't, so a larger lot shouldn't have seventy percent coverage.
This is an interesting discussion to me.
For water flow. Yeah.
Uh, that, that, I mean, if you go up to an even higher elevation and you look at watershed.
There you go, right.
Control. The rule of thumb is that, once you cover ten percent of a watershed's surface area, you're in trouble. Any additional impervious surface added to anywhere in the watershed puts more water in the mainstreams and puts it there faster, and, and that surface wa- water carries more sediment and other, I won't use an expletive.
In a high flood area such as we are.
It's deleterious to the watershed.
Yes.
Now, in the Little Miami watershed, we know that watershed taken as a whole, we're already at twelve percent coverage.
That's right.
Or more, and Beaver Creek's been a contributor to that, a major contributor, especially in the last ten years.
Yes.
When we built a thousand homes, and so, is this something we wanna take up? I, I'm not gonna force it on anybody, but I'm interested in, in having this conversation if we want to do so. And like Max said, if we, if this body wants to further recommend a somewhat smaller limit on lot coverage for accessory structures, I wouldn't object to that. Um, if you wanna make it fifty percent or whatever, I'm not sure I'd go any lower than fifty percent.
To your arbitrary.
Cause then you start, then you start bumping into property rights.
To your arbitrary, uh, discussion there, I, I would suggest maybe, if we're still concerned about this, maybe we pull that out and we go figure out if there's some kind of study or something can be done to actually come up with a more realistic number, seventy percent seems hard.
It does seem high to me, I can understand on a small lot why it is.
Well, that's just it.
You have a quarter acre lot, seventy percent can get cut, you know, you've built something and it's covered.
That's what I mean.
But if I have a large lot, that's problematic to the environment.
Correct, however, the li, I mean, the
Yeah.
likely desire of a large lot owner to cover their lot.
We don't know.
Right, but, but to your first point and how it interacts with that point, we have to consider, I mean, some of the lots we've seen recently are point one eight, point one seven acres, and they cram the house on there as much as they possibly can.
So, so that line there really is probably trying to protect a smaller lot.
Correct.
How do we counterbalance that with a larger?
You could, similarly, we could say on lots larger than a certain size, that percentage goes down, um.
Will it do it for you?
Yes.
It's something that we could talk about as well.
We'll hit no, we like that.
So, perhaps during the, um.
It was.
It was airborne.
Perhaps during the, um, the condition suggestion phase of this, we could suggest that that be changed when we recommend it or not to the trustees. Um, would be a way I could see us putting that forward to them.
We could do a little bit of research and see what percentage of the lots are covered on which we've granted variances for larger outstructures in recent years. And if we've hit thirty percent consistently but not exceeded that, maybe there's our rational number. But if we've exceeded that and we've allowed structures that bring the total lot coverage to fifty percent, we don't wanna impose language in our code that then makes those lots illegal.
I should point out.
We don't wanna create nonconformities by, by revising this code, so let's see what we've done.
Something that's really important to take into consideration, and I don't think it's been mentioned yet, but that there is a clause that the total floor area of accessory buildings by themselves can't be more than thirty percent of the footprint of the main, of the primary structure. So that's something to take into account.
That's very restrictive, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it used to be fifty, and we dropped that to thirty. So, it kind of points to the idea of, okay, I've got a five acre lot, I built a.
Three thousand square foot home.
Yeah, very large house on it, and now I can build a one thousand square foot pole barn based on my thirty thousand square, my three thousand square foot house.
So again, it's already restricted, cause we're talking about the accessory building, it's not the total.
Correct. It just, this basically says that accessory structures can't push that limit past seventy of impervious surface coverage. But it still does say that accessory structure, total coverage of the lot can only be thirty percent of the footprint of the primary structure. That's still in place, and I.
So maybe we just refer the reader to that next section.
Is there some counterbalance there?
Yeah.
There is one, I'm happier, but I still don't know that we talked about watershed.
And I, I can tell you, I mean, we're currently working on a comprehensive land use plan update, we're in the very early phases, but talking about watershed protection and, and that is something that we are looking very heavily at, but like you have alluded to, we need to do real research on what that looks like, how, how do we integrate that into our code, so.
Okay.
This is how we've tried to bridge that gap in the meantime. Um, uh, oh, and then, as Ed mentioned, so this is kinda what Ed was talking about, we've added in a, in a required rear yard. So in your rear yard setback, you can only occupy thirty percent of that rear yard setback. So if you've got a rear yard setback that's typically, let's say fifty feet deep, and I don't know, maybe your lot width is ninety feet, you've got four hundred and fifty square feet, you'd only be able to occupy thirty percent of that, and that, we're talking to like a postage stamp sized lot here, um, with a shed or some other accessory structure, so.
Yeah, sure, that's big enough to get a mower in.
I need a mower.
Get a goat?
Get a goat, just.
Now, it's important to recognize that not all of the backyard is the rear yard setback, so this really just, it, it strives to keep that building setback truly a, a building setback and ha- ha- not have a bunch of buildings built in it just cause they're accessory buildings.
Yeah, the key operative word in that sentence is the word required, which refers to the setback, what's the required rear yard?
Um, okay, let's see, we are now at eighteen point oh six four. Um, so basically, in this, we just listed out the various business districts. Um, instead of just saying business is industrial, I think that just adds clarity to the code, in case somebody was like, oh, I didn't know, you know, I one was an industrial district, right, they couldn't claim that. Um, eighteen point twelve four is the next one here. Four, okay, so this used to basically require, it, it said that we would issue some sort of permit as the zoning office for gatherings under a canvas. Um, no, we don't, we, we have not once done so, nor do we seek to do so. Um, and so, because it's not a function that we perform, we wanna remove from the code. Eighteen twelve, or eighteen fourteen one E.
Is four meant to be a permanent thing or a temporary thing?
I'm sorry?
Was the one we just got ready for, was that meant to be a permanent thing or a temporary?
My understanding was that sometime in the past, it was something that this office did, we tried to permit outdoor gatherings. I don't think that's the direction that our office is trying to take, I don't.
We do permit the, we issue permits for the structures, for the tents, but not for events.
What goes on in.
Correct.
Do you care?
Correct, it's, it's not for us to permit an outdoor gathering, I would say.
And then from a safety standpoint, the fire department does inspect those tents as well, so if you had any sort of safety concerns, they are likewise inspecting those tents.
When they exceed two hundred square feet.
Yes.
There's been a lot of tents lately.
There was just a lot that went on during the pandemic.
Well, yeah, last year.
And.
We did that.
I'm very glad that we were not, uh, called upon to try to permit an outdoor.
You almost were, but it was us.
Or not permit an outdoor, or deny a permit for.
It was okay.
Revival.
We lived through it.
Yes, we did.
Go ahead.
All right, um.
Hi, Dave.
Eighteen fourteen one E. Um, so this clause basically just, if, if any off-street loading activity would result in the obstruction of public vehicular traveling, so public roads, for more than fifteen minutes, then they need to provide adequate traffic controls as described in the mani- manual of uniform traffic control devices by the parties engaged in off-street loading, that is something that Randy Groden suggested, we wanted to say, okay, if you're gonna be doing off-street loading and somehow, cause, you know, like, we, we all see, uh, like the FedEx truck park on the side of the road, hop out, that's for a minute, I don't love it when I'm stuck behind it or whatever, or trying to pass around it, but it is what it is. But if somebody's gonna, for me, because of the size of their vehicle or whatever, to do that for any kind of time, they need to do it safely and through this.
Does it take fifteen minutes?
Does this, um, apply to the county road construction crews?
So.
Nope.
Off-street loading is a specific.
Well, they were, they were loading like, you know, off-street loading of the gravel and asphalt.
Now they're just gonna put the paint on it, it's done.
So how do you deal with the law?
How would you enforce that?
Always park for hours.
We would be able to respond to a complaint that they were doing so if they were not following the uniform traffic controls. Does that make sense? This gives us a, this gives us a violation to actually respond to, whereas before, they were not technically violating any part of our.
Cause that's not where somebody wanted.
Hey, this guy.
It's like they're moving, like if they're moving into a house, is that kinda what you're meaning, or, I mean?
That is a reason why someone would legitimately need to do some off-street loading for longer than fifteen minutes, and they would just need to, again, take these safety precautions to make sure that it didn't, now, you know.
In most cases, that's just sitting cones out.
Right.
Yeah.
In some cases, it might be providing somewhat to direct traffic.
Flagger.
Around, depending on sightlines, you might have to put someone in the road with a slow or stop sign.
I mean, you're on that, that switchback kinda there, where, you know, Beere Valley is, where it comes off of, what is that, like Lance? And then McCay or whatever that road is, and then it goes up to Brandon, that war, that would be hard, and there's all those houses, if there was, even with the school buses parked there for, I don't know, like, three seconds, it's, I mean, that, people come up on that, I'll be fast.
Fortunately, that's in the city in Luton, but.
That's, that's the city, that's like right where we are, how is that in the city, it's across from that farm.
It's cause it's across from, it's, Beaver Valley's weird.
No portion of Lance Road is in the county.
No, not Lance, on Beere Valley, where it curves around through where those houses and stuff are.
I think it's a fine addition to the.
Yeah, I'm liking it, that's why I'm saying.
It's okay, it's okay.
Great.
We say yes.
Okay.
But I'm calling.
Did you look to see what the manual of uniform traffic control devices requires?
I did not, this was a recommendation from Randy and I.
Having dealt with that manual multiple times, one, it's not particularly user friendly, but, um, I'm just curious if it requires guns. Because to me, it seems like guns would be the most logical thing in most cases, I'm just not sure that's what it requires.
I'm imagining.
Understanding this in a four cent nightmare.
Well, and I'm imagining that it would be based on the type of public road, the type of loading, the vehicles involved, how long. The tying it to that uniform traffic control device manual was a recommendation from Randy Groden, our, our fire chief, or, uh, sorry, our, um, like, yeah, thank you, fire marshal, so when our safety director essentially says, hey, this is the way to do it, that's what I went with, that's my logic for this one.
Covered there, or why are we trying to cover here?
Because currently, we did not have any, we didn't have anything in our code that required people to do it, and so, we can't go out, if someone calls and says, hey, people are brought, blocking the street with a, they're unloading, they're moving in or whatever, I would have to say, unfortunately, that's not a zoning violation, and I can't do anything about it, and now, I could go out.
Which is a perfectly acceptable answer, I think.
What are you doing?
Yeah.
Call the police.
Exactly.
Well, why, why would you waste the police's time, doing something like that, it's kinda petty on their police.
They're moving in, they should be welcoming and helping them.
No, I'm gonna call and call them.
You're calling, I'm calling, I'm calling, so we actually.
Uh, it makes no difference, mate.
All right.
We're, we're okay with it.
We're fine.
Unless you really wanna be like, we got enough rules, this one more thing.
I mean, all of it's up for discussion, um, so. Uh, let's see here, eighteen point fifteen three A is, uh, okay, so, what we did was, we essentially tied the, so it used to list a number of feet, uh, in length for the width and length of handicap spaces, we essentially just tied this to the Americans with Disability Act standards for accessible design. That way, if that changes, um, then our standards change as well, that's why.
And it does change from time to time.
It's actually worth going off, I'm at eighteen sixteen three.
We didn't even have three, I didn't even have that, what is it?
Eighteen sixteen three, that, for some reason, those.
Well, so, because, yeah, because of a lot of formatting changes, this document is not gonna.
Right, it's not.
Match your guys', but, uh, unfortunately.
We're just trying to keep up.
Um, okay, in your guys', it will be eighteen point sixteen point nine. Uh, let's see here, nine, okay, so, what we did was, we added the ability, so when, we're talking about what required surfaces parking lots should have, um, we added the ability to allow them to, uh, use permeable surfaces. And then, if they use a permeable surface, then that will not count to any impervious surface coverage limitations. Currently, there's only the one that we're proposing, but it signals our desire to change towards a more impervious surface coverage based approach to land use management, so, let's say a, a parking, uh, you know, a building goes in, they decide to use all permeable surfaces, that's gonna decrease the amount of stormwater runoff that we get from that parcel, and so they should be, for instance, maybe allowed to build a bigger building or some other use of their land that would, uh, not normally be allowed if they had it all the way covered in asphalt. Um, currently, it only allowed asphalt, asphaltic concrete or some other comparable all-weather dustless material. That's what was allowed for parking surfaces, so technically, if somebody wanted to be, in my mind, a, you know, a forward-thinking uh, business owner and put permeable surfaces, as they could not, I didn't think that sat right with me, we should at least give them the option. Um, so that is the reason behind this change. Uh, eighteen sixteen, sorry, were there any, I thought maybe there was hesitation there.
Well, I know, but what is a? But what is a porous? Of the gravel?
Uh, granite.
Granite.
There are some, so, help us understand the difference between permeable and.
Impervious.
Imperme- what do you mean?
Give me a permit, I don't know what a permeable, solid parking lot service is constructed of.
So, I mean, I would have to look it up to give you the exact word, but.
Right, yeah, but I mean, just an example, I.
Essentially, you're, it would be like, um, it would feel a little springy under your step, it would be porous, it would have some porousness to it that would allow.
I mean, the technology's out there, I mean, people do it?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's it's done.
Like, I would love to say that's what everybody has to.
Like playgrounds, it has that squishy like.
But you're not gonna be able to afford it.
Yeah, it is, it's more expensive.
Right.
It's uh, more maintenance-intensive, it needs to be maintained more often, replaced more often, it's it's an investment.
porous material, I think it gravel, and then if you have concrete blacktop, which it's not, so I'm not real sure what. What other option it is.
Doesn't weigh on any of those.
Correct. But give me an example of what it is.
I think that that stuff that.
Granite.
Granite.
If anyone's paving their parking lot in granite, I mean, I need to know that first.
They shouldn't be in Beaver Creek Township.
Yeah, no, that's for sure. So.
Is it like recycled rubber?
Yeah, it's stuff that they put down like in parks.
Like in the playground, like.
Turned up tires.
Yeah, it's kind of a chirpy stuff too. They they make it look like grass too.
But I don't know how suitable that is for parking.
I mean, it's a impervious, or uh, permeable surfaces for parking areas is a common, well, more common. It's definitely not.
Right.
The most common by any means, but it's becoming more and more common as a way to stop what Ed was talking about earlier.
I understand the intention of it, I just don't know what it is, or I don't know that I've ever seen it. But if somebody wants to go to the expense put in, then that's fine.
That's all I want, I want somebody who wants to be able to do it to be able to do it.
Yeah, that's fine, I was just curious, I just don't know. Oiled lines, I'm using motor oil. That keeps the dust down. It's what they used to do.
Uh, oh gosh, I've lost my place. Um, I think I'm. Oh, right. So, um, getting us back on track, I apologize. Uh, we're here in, um, number thirteen, uh, drainage. We just added that it's the Green County runoff control and sediment abatement resolution, for clarity, just to make sure it was understood.
Such a thing?
There is such a thing.
Mm-hmm. Been around for a long time.
Really?
It's actually very useful.
Do we use it? I mean, you say it's useful, how often is it used?
Well.
Whenever we refer a proposed development, construction plan to the, um.
Regional planning.
Green Soil and Water, uh, District for review of that plan by the Soil and Water District Engineer. That's the standard that.
That they use.
Can uses when he reviews that plan to make sure that it's consistently.
Same thing when a neighborhood goes through subdivision at regional planning, they'll look at the controls that they need to place on it to avoid sediment runoff and things like that, that's part of what you'll find in that resolution.
It's being updated now, it is old and it looks its age, but it's been very useful to me over the years, both here and in my previous jurisdiction.
Um, let's see, our next one, eighteen seventeen, or in this case, your case, eighteen sixteen. This section is very long. There we go, all right. So yours, it will read eighteen sixteen, I believe, screening and buffering is the section we're looking at. Okay, so.
This is general.
The right number now.
This is general, this is that one we referred to earlier, isn't it?
Yes, it is, correct.
We already read this, we did.
Yeah. Um, basically, we we did a couple things. We removed the word decorative. Um, that's a subjective term, I mean, what's decorative, right? We removed this, a louvered fence. If if a solidly constructed fence is a is an option, then it can be louvered or not, so we've just removed louvered as one of the, it doesn't need to be there, essentially. Um, and then we added this clause, no invasive species as defined by the Ohio Department of Agriculture can be, basically can be the screening vegetation. So, um, for instance, we had, uh, if you remember, the, um, store and lock there on Dayton Xenia, uh, they planted, um, a, some sort of pear tree that was invasive as their screening, which was a requirement of BZA, um, and we made them change that to a non-invasive species. This is just a, any screening requirement should be, should not include invasive species. It's a no-brainer, but.
Flora, or could it be insects?
I mean, I see, invasive species of flora, because you're right.
Well, I'll bet that's all that's in there, though. I'll bet that that's all that's in the Department of Agricultural, what?
Yeah, I I would I would guess the Emerald Ashborers in there and some other things, so. I think that's a fine recommended addition to make sure it is talking about specifically vegetation. Thank you.
You can put a moat.
Sorry?
A moat with skeeters.
A moat with skeeters?
Silly.
Okay, all right. I know I'm, I know this is a long one, we're almost there.
We're having fun.
Um, okay. Uh, so, and then again, we, uh, raised the screening minimum height from five and a half feet to six feet, um, that matches our typical sign height allowance as well. And then no, required screening cannot contain advertisements of any time, of any kind. So we are trying to ensure that people do not use their screening, which is decidedly meant to hide that use from other uses by advertising their use, that defeats the purpose. Let's see here, eighteen point twenty-six, which I think. Got a ways to go. Okay, um, this was our beekeeping resolution. Pretty interesting. Um, this one was added for clarity, additional hives may be added at a rate of one. It just said one per five thousand square feet. We wanted, I think it was clear that it meant one additional hive per additional five thousand square feet of lot area. So just to clear up the meaning of this, to say, you can have four hives on lots having ten thousand square feet. If you have fifteen hun- fifteen thousand square feet, you can have one additional hive for five. If you have twenty thousand square feet, you can have two additional hives for six. Otherwise, I think it was a little unclear.
Okay, so why are we moving to square feet versus acreage as our unit of measure in this?
Well, we aren't moving it, it just, we didn't, we're not changing it to match acreage.
And is that square feet permitted, you know, without the buffer with it? Is there one more of that?
Uh, I don't believe that, and I'll have to look forward in the, but I don't believe that screening is required for beekeeping use, it doesn't appear to be. This specifically talks about keeping of honeybees in a residential area. So it would be, you know, residents would not typically be screened against another residence. So there's no screening requirements for it. Should it be, is a fine question, should there be screening, but, um, that's a, I mean, that's a tough question.
They don't wanna look at the hive, I mean, how you, you can't screen the bees.
Well, that's kinda, yeah, I I agree, I, I mean, screening residential from other residential is a very sticky.
Yeah.
Area.
Yeah, I didn't mean, I meant buffer.
Buffer?
I meant buffer, I'm sorry.
So, yes, sorry, hives not located within twenty-five feet of any property line. But if it is eight feet or more from the adjacent ground level, so all that to say, yes, there are some rules about where hives can be located on a property, which is essentially buffering, is what you're talking about.
So. Two hives.
No more than four on ten thousand square feet. But if you have fifteen thousand, you get one more, you get twenty thousand, you get two more, et cetera.
No, I get that, that's not what I was going with. I was just trying to figure out. So you can have two hives with high supers that, you know, on it.
Like go on top of each other?
Yeah, you do that, to keep the hive thriving, and at some point in time, you don't do that anymore. I was just trying to think, like, how big that is for one thousand or ten thousand square feet. I think that our forefathers probably wrote the beekeeping thing in there and had more sense about that than we probably know right now. Any beekeepers here? Okay.
I learned a little bit this past week.
Yeah, so it, you get where I'm at?
No, are you talking about height of the hive?
Yeah.
I learned about supers and.
Supers and ho- the the height of the hive.
Well, that.
No, it's not about, the height of the hive versus, like, it can get too big. You can get a hive that's too big and you keep adding the supers, or they they swarm out. You can have a second, you can put a second hive next to it, which will allow them to move, but at some point in time, you max out. But how many do you go high before you?
I don't.
I don't remember that.
Two geese or 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 three, three shells, and then you max out, and they're gonna swarm out.
They're gonna swarm after that, okay.
One way or another, they're gonna swarm, you gotta deal with it anyway.
Okay.
Now, there is some maintenance, uh, sections here, you know.
Oh, well, okay.
It does talk about any swarming or aggressive behavior, colonies will be re-queened, I mean, there, you're getting outside my area of expertise, I know nothing about.
That's all that matters. I was getting really hung up on that, I'm sorry, but I know that. It's okay.
All right, um, let's see, we are now. Sorry, eighteen twenty-six, eighteen twenty-seven. Eighteen twenty-seven, eight.
Yeah.
All right, um. Basically, we just removed by explosion fire or act of God, it can be damaged, it doesn't matter how it's damaged.
Restored.
And so just removing that phrase, you know, it could be.
The next section, number eight.
Eight thirty-one.
Uh, it is eighteen point, uh, twenty-seven, eight. It is the non-conformity section. And basically, this clause tells you that, um, if your non-conforming building uh, is damaged sixty percent or more of its reproduction value, it can't be restored except in a conforming way. So like, you have a legally non-conforming structure, it burns down, and it's more than sixty percent of its value, you have, you can't build it back non-conforming, you have to build it back in a conforming manner. This just basically says, it doesn't matter how it was damaged, as long as it's damaged sixty percent, that still applies. That's the change here.
Are you concerned anything about historical homes? Or historical property? That'd be a variance issue then?
Excellent question.
That is a good question, um. You know, Dawn, I might ask you on that, I mean, does the, do the historical building, uh, you know, kind of requirements outweigh our local zoning? How do they interact? I think we'd have to do some research to give you a real answer.
I mean, I don't know, you know, say something.
I I don't know, um, but my my gut guess would be that historical building would have some sort of certification or other documentation that would allow it to circumvent this at a different level than our local zoning. But I I don't know that, so. Yeah, they have to be registered, as it gets like that, so.
But this is residential, right? We're still in residential?
Correct. Well, this is any non-conforming structure.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it could be a commercial building, like, it doesn't matter where the, what the zoning district is. If the building doesn't conform and then it burns down, they have to build it back conforming.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, we are now going to eighteen point twenty-nine. The basic change here is that we used to link it to the Ohio Department of Human Services only, the licensing required to operate a nursery or daycare center. We've just opened that up to any state or federal agencies which might require such a license, again. Should the governing agency change, or?
Local, local state, yeah, also green county.
I asked, like, tell us in another township where a lot of times the licensing requirement requires that you show you have the zoning, so it's like circular. Um, and then the zoning requires, you know, that you have the license. So what ends up happening is, when someone comes in, then they have to get the zoning contingent upon the approv- approval of the licensing. Um, it's just a bit of a pain, so I, that's the only thing I would something to consider, I don't think we're really across that.
We we haven't, or at least in my time here. In fact, we have a daycare center right across the street, um, and in my time dealing with them, I've not, we don't require a a license be given at a local level. We we don't go and check.
No, I know.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that, uh, it what it was, was is it was a facility within. Basically, it's gonna be called residential, or.
Oh.
To the extent, the number of children, where you'd have to be licensed. Um, and then the licensing requirement required that you have the proper zoning. Or that you have zoning approval for it.
Yeah, we'll catch twenty-two, huh, yeah. Um, I guess in that situation, I would rather grant a use contingent upon them obtaining the license, and then they could use that to obtain the license, I think makes sense. No, that's, that's a good point, um, yeah, gotta love government, you know?
So I think county needs to go on there, local or county, because I think there's some approvals that come from like the health department and stuff like that.
Ah, okay, um.
Local health. So I just say local state, yeah, just add locally.
Uh, who's, uh? All right, uh, let's see, twenty-nine, four, again, just changing church to place of worship, uh, for inclusion. Uh, eighteen thirty, um, so basically, the the you, this adult entertainment use is is a conditional use anywhere in the township. It's not a, it's not a permitted use anywhere. So we just removed that it's a conditional in B four, because wherever we end up making it a conditional use over time, we don't wanna have to go back and change this section every time, that's all. It's always gonna be a conditional use, so we just changed it to, it's within the township, it is a conditional use. It's not a big change, truthfully, it's more for clarity of language, but, um.
But I thought we had to have it designated on purpose because of some sort of.
We have to have.
First Amendment or something.
We have to have some areas within the township where it is a conditional use. It has to, we can't prohibit its use completely.
Yeah, I hear that, but I thought it had to be specifically designated, and maybe I'm wrong about my memory on that.
No, I think you just have to, to allow it.
Okay.
Yeah, we do not have to paint a district that says adult district. It just has to be somewhere in the township, there has to be a space that it could possibly. It just has to be somewhere in the township, there has to be a space that it could possibly be a conditional use.
Okay.
Okay, so the next, again, changing churches to places of worship. And then it just removing references to specific types of places of worship in favor of more general terms. It's just a way to be more inclusive.
On that. Number four. I'm just not real sure why we have the attended by persons under eighteen years of age.
Because it's specific to adult entertainment.
All right, but I mean, if it...
Was it all of that one, did I miss that? Like two, three and...
Pardon?
And two, three and four, all of that?
No, I mean, I just don't, you know, if you're, you wanted away from a church, period. Just...
Regardless if there's minors?
Right, exactly, is what I'm...
Yeah, religious service, period. You should just leave it at that. You should, you should leave out witches.
It doesn't have to be only churches that have...
Just be anybody. Yeah, I agree.
Kids in them.
I see what you're, I see what you're saying. Um. I, I mean, we could remove that. I, you know, I think, I do know this. I know trying to restrict these businesses is a, it's a unique challenge for a township. It's guided heavily by the Ohio Revised Code. I'm not sure, and Dawn, I'd ask, I don't know, yeah. I'm not sure that we would wanna make that recommendation at this time without looking into it further, whether or not that runs afoul of O R C.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, I, I mean...
Luckily, we don't currently have any, nor are we anticipating any.
Cause a lot of churches, I'm thinking, you know, church population is gradually getting older. You know, and there's a lot of churches that don't like people fifty plus attend.
And you don't want all adult entertainment.
Right.
Yeah, I still don't want it next to a church, even if they're...
Correct.
Just get rid of eighteen, I mean, but...
Just on that one specifically, I can see that.
I mean, logically, it makes a lot of sense to me and I have no issue with it. I would just wanna make sure something we can do. But yeah, I definitely see the point. Okay.
If we can't do it now, when would you actually do it?
The next time we do an O N O S update?
Have to come back and...
No, we do this.
Yeah, were you talking about it?
Well, my goal. Let's not do it monthly.
Do you see my face?
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Um, but depending on, I mean, my vision is that it's at least every two years and probably again next year based on what we identified in this and decided that it was not the time to address it. Based on everything else we were addressing, I'd say we probably do for one next year as well. A solid look at what we didn't get to change. And it was suggested by B Z A that, hey, maybe there's at least an opportunity once a year for the B Z A, the zoning commission, to get together and say, look, these are the variances we saw this year. There were eight of them for fences in a front yard. What can we do to change the code?
So, you bring up a good point, because at the beginning, I was like, let's just let the staff do their reports so we can get to it. But that was gonna be my question. They're here and, you know, what have you seen? What, how many of these? Yeah, had variances in the impact of the changes being positive or whatnot, but... It's okay. We'll keep going.
I mean, that's a good question. I'm curious.
It is, and, um, you know, technically, we aren't even in the public comments section of it, so. It's a long one. I, I promise, I'm moving forward.
I'm glad this meeting wasn't started at seven thirty. That's all I have to say.
All right, we are gonna look at, uh, thirty-one. Again, this is a, an outdoor sale permit. We do not issue those. We don't intend to issue those, um, so we removed it as a requirement of our code. Yeah, um, basically, this section essentially said that the zoning enforcement officer will administer this and here's this. We don't have an application, as far as I'm aware. We searched through all of our files. I, I cannot think of when, and Lori could not tell me if, that she ever issued one in her time here, so we removed it. Let's see. Eighteen thirty-one, oh, four. All right. Uh, again, we removed references to the above permit. The outdoor, um, sale permit. We just removed references to it. And because we're not issuing the permit, there is no need to submit a plot plan to get the permit, so we removed that section as well.
Wow.
Yeah, I, it was very surprising to me considering in my whole time here, I'd never once even seen an application or, yeah, so. Lot of outdoor sales, though, if you notice. So.
There's one place that likes to have them like every weekend in the summer.
This is just, uh, this used to read based on authority granted in five-one-nine-point-two-one-B. It was likely assumed, um, that people would understand it was referencing the Ohio Revised Code, but we just wanted to clear that up. All right, moving on to nineteen here, Article nineteen. Uh, did I pass it? Is it somehow not included? Okay, I apologize. Let me pull that up. We're so close, we're so close. Bull hunting?
Bull hunting.
Oh, bow hunting, probably.
Yeah, we used to have a bow hunting, um...
We did?
Oh, yeah, there were kids.
Thing where people could have, we had drawing and the number of...
That's right.
That's pretty cool.
I think we should bring that back.
Well, we didn't issue permits for it, did we?
Uh, so this is our Article nineteen changes that we're looking. Basically, in this language, it specifies that the zoning inspector and only the zoning inspector be responsible for the following duties. It's, uh, very clear in the operation of our, uh, department that between the zoning inspector, that's Lori, that's her official title, myself, uh, even the township administrator. Multiple people perform these duties, looking at, looking for violations, addressing violations when they happen. Um, so just writing that any designee of the zoning inspector can do these gives us the actual cover to do that. Let's see here. Uh, this section three was just kind of reworded for clarity. There was some odd grammar. And now it reads, upon finding that any of these, the provisions of this resolution are being violated, the zoning inspector shall identify and order the abatement of such violations. It was, it just read poorly before. There is a section here that talk about, that talks about issuing a placard to be posted in a conspicuous place on the property when we approve a zoning permit. It's not something we do. What now serves as that is the return to zoning permit that's been stamped and approved and everything for their records. We do not require them to keep it in a conspicuous place, so we removed this section of the code.
Huh.
What?
I thought they always had to be, uh...
Building permits.
Building permit, and I get to display that.
Yeah, if you, if the building department or, uh, building regulations, it's just U A occupancy permit or something like that. Um, yeah, you'll need to have that displayed, but your zoning permit, your land use permit? I don't think so. And then also, we removed the requirement for Lori or the enforcing officer to maintain a record of occupancy, of certificates of occupancy. That is again, a, a function that is handled by the building regulations. Um, we've changed the word township solicitor to township legal counsel. It's just a more, more common term. I don't know, Dawn, you could tell me. Would you rather be a solic...
No, it's more, it's, you know, for villages, it's a solicitor, for some people, it's law directors for some entities, but legal counsel is appropriate.
Okay. Nineteen oh-four, uh... Yeah, okay, so we're moving into nineteen oh-five, right? Solicitor, legal counsel, uh, five-two. Again, um, we do not make someone, uh, obtain a certificate of zoning compliance. So failure to obtain that is not a res, is not a violation, violation of this resolution. Basically, we're just saying if you don't get a permit, that's a violation. Certificate of compliance is something that people might request if they are trying to obtain a loan or some other thing. They might request from us, hey, uh, give us a formal letter that says that we are, uh, in conformance with all of the zoning code. But that's not something that you need all the time. So, um... Nineteen-ten. Basically, the Board of Trustees, uh, it used to read, shall from time to time review the fees, schedules for zoning and other permits. We just changed that may at any time. We wanted to give them more freedom to do so in response to, say, um, I don't know, changing conditions on the ground or any other reason. They should be able to initiate that change if they so choose. And not, uh, be forced to if they don't see any issue with it. So, shall from time to time says, hey, if everything's good, you still gotta look at it. You still need to make changes. Let's see here. Okay, Article twenty. Going into signs now. All right, we added several definitions that we found within the text, and let me pull up the actual definitions here. You're gonna let me open it? Yeah. There we go. So. Let's get back up to the top. As you know, signs is a very long article. It's very, um, involved. We made a lot, we made some significant changes to it earlier, uh, regarding temporary signage, uh, on-premise language and things like that, so we made a couple of changes here. Uh, we needed to create these, um, definitions here. I don't know why this is the version that doesn't have them written in. I apologize for that. There are definitions that we gathered directly from, um, the, uh, there's like a municipal code book essentially that defines these. Um, so I apologize that this version of the PDF does not include those. All I can tell you is that we try to define internal illumination. I can give you the, the definitions very quickly. Direct illumination is when a sign is lit from an outside source directly onto it. External illumination means it is lit from an external source. Indirect illumination means it is lit from a light that shines onto a reflective surface, which then shines onto the, uh, sign. And internal illumination means it is lit from a light source within the sign itself. That's all written out in our definition section. Uh, twenty-point-oh-two. Where are we at here? Uh, this one, basically, we tried to, we tried to fit within the, uh, restrictions of not looking at sign content when regulating them. So we tried to say, we, we like that a neighborhood watch or some other sign like this should not, should be exempt from this requirement. So we said any signs for the purpose of enhancing public safety, I E. a neighborhood watch program, rather than saying signs that give notice of a neighborhood watch crime program. And I think that change, changes it from what's on the sign to the purpose of the sign as the controlling factor. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I E. do you mean E G?
Yeah.
I, I, do they, are they not interchangeable? Sorry.
They're not.
Okay. Yes, it is meant to be for an example, yes. Learn something new every day. Uh, all right, let's see here. Twenty-point-oh-four. Uh, six. Again, um...
Those seem to be two questions that you need to answer, though.
Uh, this was removed. Again, this, for whatever reason, this number twenty is not the final version that got in. There were various versions of this that came after, um, regional plannings, so I do apologize for that. This has been removed. Uh, we looked at this and thought, do we maybe wanna change it? Not at this moment. It's one of those things that we might look at the next O N O S update. So, where are we at? Sorry, twenty, uh, okay, ground signs. There, uh, okay. Uh, this section basically just says, the planting or harboring of invasive species is prohibited in that landscaped area that is required for signs. Now, this one gets more towards your, uh, notion that, hey, you need to make it fauna-related, flora-related, sorry, sorry. So I think that language speaks to that, the planting of invasive species, the harboring of invasive species prohibited. But we could make the argument that it needs to specifically mention flora as well. Okay.
Should we do the asphalt, should we pour us?
Yes.
Uh, we added just the words ground here, ground or pylon signs. A pylon sign is a kind of ground sign, but it is not the only kind of ground sign, so, uh, that's just some clarity. Uh, we removed any, uh, reference to on-premise signs. We, we know that we can't have those. Okay. This one had some weird, I mean, it read shall have the area of a ground or... So there was just some odd language here that we cleaned up. We didn't change the meaning or intent. We just tried to clear up the grammar there. Again, listing districts for clarity. Twenty-point-oh-four, okay, this one is fairly important here. The, we did, for temporary signs that are, uh, allowable without a permit during election season, which we talked about at length previously. We did a couple of things based in response to, uh, what we heard during last year's presidential election from candidates and other people who wanted to display signs. Um, we increased the maximum height of these temporary signs to six feet. Basically, we have a new standard type of political sign or, or sign that is often used during, um, elections, that is a four-foot by four-foot sign that stands six feet tall. You've probably seen them around. They typically, in our code before, were not a permitted sign type. We had to issue, we had to creatively issue permanent commercial ground sign permits for those people who wanted to display those signs because we did not have a way to permit them. This fixes that. This, this allows people to put those signs which are in common use up during this time. Um, but only during this time. Does that make sense? Yeah, so. Basically, okay. You, you read this and it says, any permit for a temporary design, it's defined early in the article, during a period of time extending thirty-one days before any scheduled primary, general, local, or special election through five days after such an election, then these rules apply to those signs. So basically, it is getting at that it is political signs without saying political signs. And basically, we give them a longer duration than we typically would for the placement of temporary signs. We give them a increase in the maximum allowable number of signs on their property. And then finally, we increase the height and maximum sign area with these additions here. We added this, that under-marquee signs shall be mounted at a height of at least eight feet. That's kind of a, don't let anybody bump their head except Shaq, you know, kind of a thing. There is no, typically, if you had an under-marquee sign with this, you could theoretically drop a, a sign pretty low. I don't know that businesses would, but we just tried to avoid that possibility here. Have to be eight feet. Let's see here. Okay. Twenty oh five. Okay. Basically. We can, within signs permitted in residential districts, you get one permanent ground sign to identify an approved subdivision per frontage essentially. But we allow a larger number of ground signs. This said through the PUD or conditional use processes. What we want to tie that to is a specific site plan or variance process. So it's not a conditional use in my mind, in our mind as a staff, additional signs. Signs are already allowed. It's a variance for the number of signs. And also, if a development comes in and is able to identify on their specific site plan and have it be approved by the zoning commission during that phase, that they want additional signage for a certain reason, we believe that they should be allowed approval then and there of those additional signs to identify the developer. That's the changes we're hoping to make here.
These are just for temporary signs, the, the development signs?
These are for permanent ground signs, so not necessarily. These, these are like your, not your advertising, coming soon, buildings open, twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. This is the River Reserve or Hunter's Point entrance sign. Perhaps they might want an additional one for whatever reason. That's what we're saying here. There's an additional section here for temporary signs that talk about, and then even in the PUD language, there's additional language about development signs for that use, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Gosh, let's see. We want to allow additional awning signs if needed. Basically, it's arguable that sometimes awning signs are two signs, even though it's meant to be one sign, but they have two, they have the structural requirements of two signs, two bases, two attachment points to the, to the building. So we'd just like to be able to say, okay, look, as long as it meets the other standards of this code, if it's technically two signs that make one sign, we don't, we don't want it to be a big deal. We don't want to have to bring it forward to anybody. It's not a necessary change, but it's something that we think will improve our kind of customer service in the future. This one was interesting. This one just said, one or more neon signs shall be permitted. We thought that was really open-ended, that could theoretically mean that fifty are permitted. Yeah. So we just changed that to one per individual establishment is permitted. For a permanent neon sign, you know, if they want a variance from that, sure. But I don't know if neon is Beaver Creek Township's sign choice. Let's see here. We removed the words, when we're talking about temporary ground signs all through this, it says wield. It, it specifies a wielded ground sign. We don't understand that. We don't understand the reason there. If it's portable, it shouldn't matter if it's wielded or it couldn't be picked up and moved, you know. So we just wanted to remove that requirement. And we did reduce the total sign area of these from thirty-two square feet to twenty-four. And then the total area of forty-eight, so basically doubled that. So back and front, twenty-four square feet of sign face for these kinds of temporary portable signs.
The wheel sellers are gonna be up in arms.
I know. We're taking food from their mouths, so sorry.
And maybe the ball bearing sellers too.
A wall sign, so this is kind of in line with, if we're tying our height of our principal structure to the building code, there's no reason that a wall sign should not be able to go up at least to the top of the wall. There, there's no reason that it should stop at twenty-five feet, as far as we're concerned. We don't understand any safety reasons why that should be. So we just said, a wall sign just can't go above the top of the wall that it's attached to. Again, wield, removing that. Wield, removing that requirement. Same thing. Okay. Signs permitted in ag districts. Right now, it specifies that signs are permitted for developed, non-residential or non-agricultural parcels. Oftentimes, the reason you want to sign is because the parcel's not developed yet and it's either anticipating development or you are trying to attract development. So we removed that to allow permanent ground signs in undeveloped parcels as well. Again, the wall sign thing here, allowing it to be to the top of the wall. All right. Okay, that's where nineteen went. I apologize, it must've just went out of order. So we've already done nineteen. We have twenty-one coming up. Okay, the zoning commission article. We added this, again, that's just a typical, when you have a spelled-out di- a number, you want to add the digits next to it. And then, okay.
Well, there was another one I saw that had that amber stamp on it, it wasn't the amber. I don't know if that was a thing, but.
I don't know if, I'm not familiar with that style guide, but it may be.
I didn't know, it was, because if you're talking about spelling out, I mean.
This one, this one is kind of a major change here. Basically, before, the zoning commission was required to review our land use plan and the zoning resolution no less frequently than every two years with the land use plan being in the odd years and the zoning resolution being the even year. So basically, every two years, we were supposed to be doing something like this for the zoning resolution and then something like this for the comprehensive land use plan. The comprehensive land use plan hasn't been updated since 2012. We're currently engaging NVRPC to begin that process for next year. The zoning resolution, I am not able to identify when an omnibus update was last conducted, which leads me to believe it's quite a while ago. So. I want to be realistic about the need to do it every two years. So basically, what I did was instead of tying it to a timeframe, I suggested that it is whenever a review is applicable, necessary, and/or requested by the township board of trustees. So that leaves three conditions for when we would want to review either the land use plan or the zoning resolution for additions, deletions, and changes. I would be interested in hearing your thoughts on this change. But I personally don't think it should be every two years you have to do this, especially if we're going to engage in two major overhauls. I mean, is it necessary that we do it two years after that? Should we not instead say, look at it? Do we need it? Is it applicable? And then if the answer is no, do not do it.
So, a couple of things. One, I agree it needs modified because we have not been following our own rules. Two, the conditions, the three conditions as applicable, necessary, and requested by the township board of trustees, only one of those is really truly miserable isn't the right word, but anchored.
Finding, objective, yeah.
Yeah. And so, do we need to look at review of applicable and necessary to be more defining? Would it be better to do a broad catch, not, not to? Well, not to exceed a minimum of ten years or something.
Yeah, exactly, there should be like a, like a number, that you can't go.
Minimally on a.
Minimally on a, yeah.
I was just saying, you shouldn't just sit out there for years and never be.
Or by the advice of legal, I mean.
I wouldn't put a time on it. I currently have a case that there, that a township is being sued because the argument is they haven't updated their land use plan and therefore they're saying some zoning was denied inconsistent with the land use plan, but the land use plan. And the reason it hasn't been changed is because the nature of, and the character of the township hasn't changed and therefore there's no need to update the land use plan in zoning resolutions. So I'm not sure exactly what applicable means, but I think you could say necessary, let's see, so whenever such a review is necessary based upon changes in the character of development within the township or something along those lines.
Can we get, oh, sorry, go.
And that, and that, but I, I'm not sure what you mean by applicable, whenever a review is applicable.
I think he's saying like if there's been a legal change or some sort of a.
Event.
Yeah, event might be. But even then, it would be periodic to.
The, the only challenge to periodic is, is to the point you made, is we need to make sure we do it then, right?
Yeah, that's a problem. If you're gonna put a timeframe with a.
Well, that's what I was wondering, can you get rid of applicable and necessary and just leave it up to the township board of trustees whenever they.
Township, yeah, deem necessary?
Deem it necessary. That's the public.
I believe that such changes should be able to be initiated by this body.
I do too.
As you become aware, or as you become aware of the need. And I also think that we probably could insert language about in order to maintain consistency with state and federal law.
I think that's what I'm interested in saying. It could be staff, commission, or trustee initiated or consistent with state, federal, or.
In response to changing legal requirements, maybe is the way to.
Sure.
There is currently no legal, specific legal requirement as to how often you do it.
Right.
But, but it should be based upon.
Other changes in state law will require.
I mean, if the township, you know, if you didn't change something in the township because, you know, forty years ago, this was much more rural than it is now, you have to update it in accordance with the character and the changes within the township.
Well, technically, it is the trustee's job, but I think that, I think it could go flow from us or the staff to them or them back to us. I think it should be bi-directional.
I think that, so that is the intent, I should say. Even if it wasn't written correctly. The intent is for it to be.
Intent and having it right in the work. That's also a contrition, interpretation.
Oh, I, I agree. That's what I'm saying. If, if there's questions about whether or not that was portrayed in this wording, then the wording needs to change because it was, in my, in my mind, it's intended that you, in fact, the BZA, staff, trustees, and like Dawn said, changing characteristics, all of those things could trigger us to review the zoning resolution for changes, additions, deletions, or the land use plan as well. So that was my attempt at a very broad. Hey, I could say it's applicable in a lot of ways, you know. As staff, I could say, look, this is applicable because, and then it meets this. So it was meant to be a very broad standard.
So maybe a broad one deemed appropriate or necessary.
Which it says, right? Is it okay?
And, and don't talk about who needs to drive that. Just leave it open.
Just whenever such a review is appropriate or necessary.
Hey, I love simple, that's crazy.
Unless we need this to actually direct us to do it on.
To guide it, yeah, that it's necessary.
I would agree. Okay, I like that. Okay. We are so close.
But yeah, you have that case that says.
Well, because they were required to.
Oh, because.
No, they weren't required. People are trying to claim that they're required to and, and the position, no, the law doesn't require them to. It's just, it becomes sort of objective as to whether or not it is necessary.
But if we require it, if we require it in our code.
We're following our own rules.
Right. It's a lot easier to say, you didn't do what you said you were supposed to do. So.
Okay. Okay.
That is.
Best practices that ought to be looked at in about every five years.
Yeah, let's make sure the code doesn't make promises that the staff.
Why do we say like that then? According to best practices, I like that. Where's those best practices?
No, I mean, I live in a licensed world, so I can't say.
You want specifics?
Well, no.
Every two years.
Fine, no, no, I don't like, I don't like held to specificity on something like this because, but in a licensed world, a, a best practice would be acceptable, not just acceptable, expected, yeah.
It'd also be, it'd be interesting to, you'd have to identify the best practices each time, I think, by adding that.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll just leave it general.
I can speak in words.
We're going back to general then.
Guess what? That is the last change I need to present to you.
Okay, we've heard from the applicant, or from the staff now. It's time for comments, right?
Correct. May I suggest?
Is this a public hearing?
It is.
I think it is. So we need to open the public portion? Is that what we're doing now?
We should.
We should.
May I suggest a five-minute recess?
It's been two hours and fifteen. I would like to.
Okay. So before we open the public portion of the meeting, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll return back at twenty.
Twenty-one. Twenty-twenty? Twenty-twenty, no, twenty-twenty-one, please, can we not do twenty?
Thank you, board.
How about eight-thirty? Let's return at eight-thirty. Thank you, fifteen.
That's too long.
That's way too long.
Twenty-twenty-one, you hear my twenty-twenty-one?
I like twenty-twenty-one.
All right, I'm into it.
Eight-twenty-one.
Thank you, board.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-one, come back, not at twenty-twenty, not real living, twenty-twenty.
Bring that shit, we don't get up to be. Bring that shit, we don't get that to be.
Relax, we've been here a good time.
We're taking my break. We're taking my allotted break, I talked four minutes.
There you go.
I'm gonna walk around, my watch says it's supposed to stand up.
Well, that's why, this is just a little whole thing.
Be back in four minutes. Well, three minutes, now I'm taking up time.
Excellent mind work, will be part of the public record.
Exactly.
Thank you all, I know this is, I know this is a lot, trust me.
There were different ways we could have approached this. It's good, it's good.
I would have liked, frankly, I, I would have liked to have been like, you've all read it, tell me what we need to go over, but for the benefit of anybody who wants to watch later.
The rules.
Exactly.
It's the rules. And the other thing I wondered if we should have done was at the very beginning, define what ob, I can't ever say it.
Omnibus.
Means.
That's true, yeah.
We can still do that.
Sure, yeah, I mean, maybe, I mean, we can refer to it something else, frankly, a comprehensive update or a.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Yeah. I don't know why it's, I don't know why it's called omnibus.
Probably it's Latin or something.
Yeah, I know omni means like all, but.
Or something.
Yeah. You had me thinking there for a second too, like, is it in Latin? No. You're being funny.
No, I don't, it's, I have no way to.
Didn't they, aren't they in like all the hot water, right pat because of the foam already? Like with, and the P-falls or what? What are they?
Eight triple F foam.
Yeah, isn't that like getting into the groundwater around here and? All right.
Where's Rushden, where's Rushden Drive? Well, everybody needs to start using granite. It would have been so much better. Oh, it's twenty-two-three.
Oh, they twenty-three, I call the meeting back to session, please. Okay, order four, pull up. I turn to the quarter, please. I think at this time we should open the public portion of the meeting, correct?
Yes.
And now we would like to hear from those in support of the application. There's no application discussion, is there? So, what do we hear from the zoning board of appeals, correct? Is that what we need to do?
Well, they may have comments. Frankly, I invited them to get a better understanding of this process. So they can understand what we were doing to address some of the variances.
So, there's really nobody here to listen to any comments that they, that are to be said outside of the BZA, people and us.
Correct.
Right?
Yes, but I would still offer them, if they so chose, the chance to make.
Right, so I think you heard us talk before what our basic question is in terms of the things that have been presented. Do you see, they are consistent with some of the things that you're seeing?
The biggest issues we had, as Sam explained earlier, we had most of our works been concerning issues for size of building, accessory buildings, height and size. And we've had a lot of fence issues, existing fences that were put in the wrong places, existing fences that were built too high. On the accessory structures, we were, we were just pretty much approving every one of them and it was a general consensus of all of us of, you know, hey, do we, do we need to visit this? Does someone need to visit this and change the height requirement? Loosen it up a little bit, change the size of the building footprint? The only thing I can say to all of that, what I heard tonight is, have you ever heard the expression, kiss, keep it simple, stupid? I, I think that if you go the route that you talked about, thirty percent of this and forty percent of that and ten percent, the poor general public is just gonna be totally baffled. I think that we need to increase the allowable square footage of an outbuilding, accessory building, from nine hundred to something more. And like Ed said, look back at what we've approved and see what the, the average approval was. I don't, I don't know that we're talking about jumping from nine hundred to three thousand, I know we're not. But we might be talking about, and keep it simple and say, accessory structures can't be more than fifteen hundred square feet without, without coming in and filing for a variance.
I would have appreciated that, I would have had variance.
Right. And, 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 and your building you build was comparable to what most people would wanna come in and ask for. They're not coming in and asking for a hundred by two hundred foot building on a five acre piece of property, we haven't seen that. We don't, we don't see where they're trying to cover seventy percent of their lot in buildings under roof. We, we don't get those kind of zoning variance requests. So what I'm saying is I don't think we need to jump off the cliff at nine hundred square feet. We just, we just need to look at possibly, and going in and looking at some data, make it fifteen, sixteen hundred square feet or, or fourteen fifty or, or. And, and then people that wanna build something bigger than that, then they come in for a variance.
Are you finding that most of the ones that you're talking to are on larger parcels?
Most of, most of them are on, yeah, most of them are acre, two acres, five acres, ten acres.
What about the heights? What do you think about these heights?
Most of the time the heights, when people come in wanna height variance, it's because they're trying to match the peak of the roof on their house. We rarely, I don't think we've had anybody come in with a ranch house wanting to build a barn big enough to put their motorhome in. But I can tell you that if, if that was the only issue, that they needed a bigger building and they needed it to be higher to put their RV in, and they had a ranch style house, we'd approve it. Based on the fact that they're on an acre or two acres or three acres, having a building sitting back behind your house some distance with a, with a higher peak roof on it, a pole barn for example, it's gonna look fine with a, with a ranch style roofed house. We just, most of the time, you know, they wanna, they, it's not that they need the height, but they wanna, they, they see the height limit because of the peak of their existing house roof. Some of them are a twelve, twelve peak, you know? They wanna put that twelve, twelve on their, on their outbuilding to make it look really nice. So, and, and fence permits, the fence, fencing, I don't, there, there's so many variables with, with the fence, the fence rules and regulations, you know? We, we learned in our last meeting the other night that in some flats, like over up Indian Ripple Road, you can put your fence right out of the sidewalk. You know, there's no setback from the sidewalk, you can put it that close, so.
What, what is that based on? Is that based on neighborhood specifications? But I mean, how is there such a difference?
It's so many feet off the, what do we decide, Sam? Off the curb.
Oh, because they don't have sidewalks or is?
They do have sidewalks.
They do.
So with fences, there's a couple of different rules about placement. The one is that if the street is curved and guttered, then the fence can be no, closer than twelve feet from the curb of the street. If it doesn't have curve and gutter, it's measured from the center line of the street. So they can, the Kingsbridge neighborhood, doesn't have curves and gutters, you go from the center line of the street, it's twenty-five feet. There's also a rule that within a required front yard setback, AKA your, your, you know, your front setback, your building setback, that a fence cannot be taller than three feet in that required front yard. That's to make sure that there's no visibility problems with a tall fence. We allow six feet fence everywhere else. So, if you were to put a six-foot fence in someone's front yard, specifically on like a corner lot, you might run into line of sight problems. So, there's a couple of different points from which we measure. One is from the curb, and that's talking about distance from the curb that the fence can be placed regardless of height. And then we talk about the distance into the lot, that a fence can be six feet tall versus three feet tall. So those are the differences there.
And that's the other thing we're seeing a lot of on the fence issue is height, height in the front yard. It's three feet. Well, if you have a dog, a three-foot fence is useless. And that's what they're trying, the big dogs, I'm not talking about a little poodle or something. But everyone we've had has come in needing a variance for height. They need, they need four feet, not the three. My dog can almost step over a three foot, four foot will keep him in. Four foot, four foot tends to keep kids' hands and arms from reaching into the yard of the dog. So, so, so that's what we're, we're seeing with the fences, and, and it's corner lots. It's been, a hundred percent corner lots when it comes to the.
For front yards, so you need that versus the backyard.
Yeah, and they have two front yard setbacks on a corner lot.
Right.
They don't understand that. So they've gotta have this three-foot fence on two sides of the property, and they don't, they don't like that. They like to see, okay, we'll leave the three in the front, but why down the side of our house? Well, because that's the front yard setback, you're on the corner. Well, we didn't know that one was up the corner, well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you get a lot of that.
We have granted four-foot high fences. And the reason being is that they haven't been solid fences. They've been wrought, like a wrought iron type fence, aluminum fence where they're open. So there's an oversight issue. The other thing isn't trying to, trying to figure out how to enforce it. Is it our, is it our friend?
That was, so, I don't know who, I don't know what the person who brought that up was looking at, but it was done.
It was?
Yeah, it's very clearly been done.
Maybe it had been done, had it been done after he saw it?
It had been done months ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other problems with primary structures and heights? I think there was some language about primary structures and heights. Any problems with those? But that would happen, wouldn't come to you, would it? Would it come to you?
I mean, if somebody wanted to build a house that was taller than our current allowable height limit, then yes, they would apply for a variance. But we've not seen that come forward yet.
Because I think there was some language about that being changed.
Yeah.
A hundred percent of our time has been, I've been on it, what, three years? Four years?
You've been on it longer than I have.
Anyway, a hundred percent of our hearings, all the ones that I can think of, so that makes it ninety-nine, have been fence issues, height and variance for outbuilds, accessory buildings.
That's, as far as my recollection goes, pretty correct.
We can't dictate to them how this, how it's to look in the township, like the city can. We got into an issue with, when I first was on that committee of BZA about the bombers, Jim. I asked, they were gonna, the neighbors were there all across the street, all upset that it was gonna be there. And I said, well, you, you made it mingle and with the rest of the properties. And Dawn, Dawn remembers, she leaned forward, she said, you can't dictate to them what it's gonna look like. It's old.
Okay.
Not in township.
Right.
So you put conditions on it, but not conditions of what it's, what it's to look like.
So the things that you saw presented here tonight, was, was that a product of work sessions that you guys have had with staff? Or is this all really?
Just basically talking off the record.
Less formal.
Less formal, okay.
Yeah, less formal, after a meeting, off the record.
So.
Put something on the record.
Aside of the idea of looking at some data that is probably available or retrievable and looking at, instead of percentages, at some sort of an exact.
Well, one of, one of the fellows on our, on the BZA is a hydrologist. And he, he helps all the time with the runoff and this and that. And he's been at many of those meetings where we've approved a larger building on the lots on as it was presented. He strictly wants to know where the septic system is and where the active septic system area is. You're not building over the top of it, you're not, but generally, we don't have too much discussion on the amount of runoff it's gonna generate.
So any other recommended changes or concerns that you saw based on what you watched tonight?
No, the only other thing I might comment on is the, that the, the business owners that might consider impervious parking lot, think that needs to be spelt out a little more, a little better, because gravel is impervious.
I know, right?
Yeah.
And gravel can be very dusty.
Yeah.
Depending on what type of gravel they use. So, do we, do we wanna, do we wanna create that monster of having this unbelievable dust problem?
So, you saw us passing phone back and forth and stuff when we were looking that up to just see what was in it. We were, you know, giggling about granite versus limestone versus chip. Yeah, and. What is the makeup or the composite of impervious versus impervious?
And, and that, that impervious products, they're, they're not cheap.
No, they're expensive.
The geogrid systems and all of that are very, very expensive. And I don't know what the cost savings would be to do that versus, unless. And I don't know what the cost savings would be to do that versus, unless they really just needed a bigger building and that was their way to get around runoff, they were gonna create.
Well, and, you know, you bring up a good point, because the county's not, probably not making that as part of the roads, right, so...
Right.
I mean, we, that's a lot of, of area as well, so, um, that would have runoff or whatnot. So I think, I think if it were to be better defined, how could we do that and not be restricted?
Well, I, I think that, I think when you get into the commercial end of it, there is so much emphasis put on retention, retention ponds, for the example, is the new fire station.
Yeah.
The runoff that they generated, they, 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 because I live right next to it, we're ne- we're new neighbors. And, and they were very concerned with not creating any more runoff into my ditch. And, you know, we had several meetings about that with the county, with the fire department. And, and looking at their plans, and either doing a, a dry well in, in the retention pond, or a, a, what was that, a, a, it's called a dry garden, a rain garden. Which is a hole with a bunch of plants in it, sand in the bottom, maintenance nightmare. So I, I, I think with, I think with all that being required now for just about any development, the runoff issues are being addressed. Doesn't matter what size your building is, you've gotta have, you gotta have the ability now, nowadays, to retain your runoff with a certain amount of water as part of them approving your, your whole plan.
And you have to be able to assure the quality of the water that wants, that it does get released.
Right.
It's not just how much you retain, it's not just how much you release and what the rate is. You have to retain it for an amount of time that guarantees it's not full of sediment.
Right.
And so forth. So, yeah, we, we, Leo was right, we, we have a lot of, we spend a lot of time going round and round and round with the county on, on those water quality standards, not just quantity.
So you were saying that perhaps the, that we needed to be a little bit more specific about the...
I don't think that I...
Without being restrictive, I don't know how we would modify that.
I'm thinking commercial development, is, is it in there now that they can use an impervious surface for their parking area?
No, currently, the only allowable is asphalt and concrete or dustless concrete.
Yeah, I think that's the way it should stay.
I, so you would not allow somebody who wishes to do that, to do it?
I think you get in, I think you then get into the EPA issue of the dust that's created, that could be created. You, you fill that in with, you fill that parking lot in with four lemons with dust, and in the summertime, when that's dry, that is, that is unbelievable. The dust that's generated off of that. It, it's more maintenance to, to maintain a, a gravel parking lot.
That's correct.
Versus, versus a hard surface, asphalt or concrete.
But it has the benefits of reducing the amount of stormwater.
It has the benefit of reducing the amount of runoff that's, that's created, and the amount of runoff that the potential developer, builder, owner has to be responsible for and handle. Yes, it does do that.
Well, but it, I mean, it also reduces the amount of stormwater runoff that floods into the Little Miami at a fast rate. If it's able to be absorbed into the parking lot, rather than sheet off it.
Well, but, but, but like I said, just almost a hundred percent of all commercial developments have some type of retention pond or pond to handle the runoff from their piece of property.
Yes, yes.
So if I'm hearing what you're saying, then removing gravel from that language would be what he's recommending? Is that what I'm hearing?
I...
I'm saying remove the impervious.
Yeah.
But don't, don't add the impervious part.
Okay, well, okay.
Because gravel's...
Just be my suggestion.
Didn't I hear you say it wasn't in there now?
Correct. That, that's what you're saying. I believe what you're saying, Leo, is the suggestion to add the ability to have permeable surfaces, to not have that, to re, to leave it as is, to leave it as it currently stands.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So then they would have to get a waiver, a way...
They'd have to come see you then for a variance, for a variance.
For a variance. They're not gonna be knocking down their doors for it, like...
At the cost of...
No, they're not gonna be doing it.
Hot hole, headache, maintenance issue, each weeds out of everything else.
No, I'm saying if you took the, uh, previous out of this and, and you just kept it the way it was before, if somebody wanted to do that, could they do that by coming in and getting, well, a, a...
A variance.
And ask for it, yes.
That's a necessary thing, yeah, they could do it.
You'd come in, you'd come in and ask for a variance on any of that. If you wanna pay the three hundred bucks or whatever.
Then they're doing that.
Yeah.
Yep.
If I may request the board to, to keep it as the same, and we can entertain, um, not standard necessarily, but whatever the, the industry kind of suggests of how to put that into the language and come back to it later on, on that type of a thing, because, um, hun- hun- they, they have a small impervious surface on, on their lot, I think that was done. Little bit of flaws. Or whatever it was, yeah. They have a small impervious surface on, on their lot, I think that was done. So, and it's not gravel, it's an asphalt. But let's, let us...
Thank you, Ray.
Or, or the impervious products out there that don't involve gravel, you could...
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you could, you could...
I think that's fair for the purpose of not holding up the rest of the, the language. Strike that, work on it at a different time. I think that's a fair suggestion.
So my question to you is, is there anything else that you would want us to consider about the things that you've seen tonight?
No, I, I've actually seen some of the changes on the site again. It was nice to see, uh, but no, I really, I pretty much saw.
Should we change, should we change the fence, the, the thing that was...
Not addressed. Um, the main reason that the BZA sees fence height variance cases is because they're on corner lots, and they have two required front yards. That's, we talked about it in our last meeting, how we might address that. I don't personally believe that there is much of a way to address that. The reason that corner lots are the issue is because they're at a corner, they're at an intersection. And so we have to be very careful to make sure that whatever fences go up don't block line of sight at the intersection. So I don't believe that we should allow by rights taller fences in front yards. I think it should remain...
Sort of case by case.
Exactly. It does need to be case by case, um, I believe.
I mean, we gotta have something coming here once in a while.
All right, let's lower it to two feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what's always tricky about this is when we should close the, um, open portion of the hearing, and it's really not until everybody's ready to make a decision, right, and we've discussed it. And so where are you guys in your fatigue meter here?
To close your public's portion and then talk to them.
Can we can do it that way? So go ahead and close it? Okay, okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. Now, are you all in a place where you want to continue this discussion about some of the things we've heard? Make a motion to adjourn and come back, or do you want to make a motion to accept with various, uh, various changes? None changes? Where are you? That's on me.
Go that way, let's walk.
Go that way. Wait, wait, your, listen.
I mean, I'm not ready to vote on things as written. I think there needs to be some...
More talk.
More talk, maybe a few changes.
Do you wanna talk the rest of the night?
You asked me if I was ready to...
Yeah, or do, or do we continue on?
Do you wanna, do you wanna continue now, or do you want to come back?
So I think Max has covered most of my questions. The only thing I have sort of lingering is the, uh, the unspecified definition of light manufacturing. We use that, we even come up with percentages, but we really haven't defined what that is, so I'd like to see that.
What's your thought?
On light manufacturing or...
Just in general.
Just in general.
You know, when we first, when I first started the meeting, we were discussing the Airbnb thing. I mean, I, I think that needs to be visited, and clarified what, because there's so many aspects of Airbnb, whether you're renting out a room, renting out the house, you know, as far as putting the limits on it.
Yeah, well, because the Airbnb to me is different than renting out a room, just somebody that's going to app it, so, I mean...
Pardon?
My personal opinion is, like, Airbnb is gonna be a lot different than somebody renting out a room, just somebody that's...
Well, no, I mean, there's a specification in Airbnb where if you can rent a room, if you're looking for a room to rent, you're looking for a house to rent.
Yeah, well, I think that was a big change to throw in there, to not have us all have a, a discussion about it, honestly.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm saying, that's why I'm not prepared to vote on anything. I mean, I think it needs to be addressed more.
So...
At a lifetime, just that's...
So...
Well, not right now. I don't wanna do it right now.
You don't wanna do it right now, okay. So with that, are we at a standstill for what you want to accomplish tonight?
Well, I, I mean, if you want to further discuss, then yeah, like the...
If you want to further discuss, or you want to come back. When you want to talk about it tonight.
Well, I mean, that's fine, I mean, I...
It might help you guys if you sort of figure out what are the areas you still want to address, so that when you come back, you have to go back all through it.
So I heard light manufacturing, I heard Airbnb, I heard the data about the average number of, uh...
The average lot coverage created by variances for the size of accessory structures.
And it's specifically not lot coverage, but size of the structure, is that...
Size of the, size of the...
Yeah.
Well, isn't the point, though, that you previously had just sort of a random number at nine hundred square feet? So maybe a percentage would make it more... Yeah.
Rational.
Yeah, but that you, to determine that percentage, look at what...
Yeah, that's exactly right.
The other question that was raised, and I think it was answered, but, but we just need to make sure that it is answered, was their definition of a church with minor, minor...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, that...
Yeah, the eighteen and a half owner, whatever, yeah.
Okay, this is the adult business, right?
Okay.
And, uh, I have a question about the, um, the very first one about the prime farmland, I understand it shouldn't be in an R O one, but is that la, is prime farmland somewhere else in the document, and is it, you know, and I can do that at a later date, I'll look through it and come back, and I may have the question and I may not.
So, prime agricultural soil and protecting it is, uh, identified in our current comprehensive land use plan. However, if you look at the actual development patterns since twenty twelve, it's very clear that the protection of prime agricultural soils is not a policy objective.
So where I am with that is that, um, the purpose of USDA making certain that there was prime designation helps with growth management and preservation of farmland. And so if at any point in time you have a parcel that has prime farmland, could it then be restricted for conservation easement? And if it is restricted for conservation easement, then that's a, that's, it's not in the best interest of the land owner to make choices about the future use of that land. The second thing about that, in my opinion, would be, um, a question that I would have would be, we are thinking in the here and now, we don't always have the crystal ball, and can we undo what we do? So my question would be is, we have a lot of, um, a resid, we have a lot of ag that is changed to commercial or to residential in the hopes of development, but can you ever go backwards? Because that may be part of our future, is wanting to go backwards in some way.
I mean, that's a, it's a lot.
It's a lot, it is.
I think what you were talking about, truthfully, is better addressed in the kind of comprehensive land use plan update that we're planning. Essentially, we're talking about broad philosophies about land use.
We are.
And so this language that you were talking about simply says that estate lots do not protect prime agricultural soil.
Correct.
It doesn't necessarily remove that as a, just that change does not remove that as a policy objective. It doesn't change the comprehensive land use plan, which currently suggests that we protect it.
So, um, my, what I would like to do is, you, you may be right, I may be, after I think, have some time to think about it, I may be like, that's exactly, you know, I have a problem with it coming out of there. I'm just wondering if, if it is addressed under agricultural, um, the agricultural piece within this. The agricultural zoning within this, so I don't know if it's there or not.
I do, I do believe so. We can take a quick look if you'd like. I don't wanna say yes for sure.
I, I don't want to.
Neither do I, frankly, it's like...
I'm just tired.
I understand your point, I believe, um, and what I can do is I can, it sounds like we are primed to come back and discuss this again. So I can check on that for you, and just give you a little synopsis, synopsis of where that phrase appears in the zoning resolution now. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, and that's on those five points, light manufacturing, the Airbnb, the data coming from you on the, on the, uh, average use of the size of an accessory building, I think, is what we said on the, on the land. The church, uh, church places of worship for minors, and, um, the prime, what was it, prime ag.
Agricultural soil.
That's it, that I can think of. Everything else seemed like we did it.
So there was one other thing that, that what we had now, there were a bunch of tables that were removed, I never saw them replaced, so I'm...
So they're moved down to the, is that the appendix?
Sure, I'd be glad to do that. Essentially, what you'd be looking at is moving them to, when this, I don't wanna say when. If this omnibus resolution is recommended and then passed by the trustees, there will have to be an administrative action to reformat the entirety of it.
Yeah, my, my biggest interest or curiosity is, did any of the content change in the papers?
No, none of the content changed.
So you're just moving them from...
That, those tables are administratively controlled by the trustees. Administrative actions from them, resolutions can change their, uh, what's in the code.
Picture's worth a thousand words, it looks like.
No, I understand. I can promise you that nothing, no information on those tables changed, just their location within the document. But what I can do is mock that up for you for our next, and just give you an idea of, here's what the appendix will look like. Does that satisfy what you're looking for? Okay.
Okay. Um, two other things. Do you have a book?
I do, but I didn't bring it with me.
Oh, that's okay.
Well, we just wanna make sure you did.
I, we just wanna make sure, and, um, we will all need ours replaced after we pass.
That's what we do, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I do, do have some new business as well, I'm so sorry. Um, it'll be very quick.
Okay.
I would like to request a motion from the zoning commission to bring, uh, M one mining language district for, to regional planning for their review. I sent you guys an email about that. Essentially, we've been working with the Phillips company. We know that they plan to expand their mining operation. What we wanna do is be transparent about land use, and so we think it districts specifically created for that, because it is a, you know, significant use in the township, uh, is warranted. We've got the language written, we've worked with a, an attorney that represents the industry that Phillips put us in touch with to make sure we didn't run afoul of Ohio revised code. We have Dawn currently looking... We have Don currently looking at it. I'd like your formal motion to bring it to regional planning for their review process so that it can be before you in November.
To be honest with you, Max, I don't have, I can't say that, yes, because we received, I received it today and have been at work all day and have been at the homecoming cradle day. And I honestly have not even looked at the attachments that were sent. He's not asking you to review the attachments at this point because you guys... Well, I don't even know anything about what, I get, I understand that. I mean, I don't even know what it is that I would be recommending, to be honest.
It would be a zoning district that we would create that would be specifically designed to outline the land use of mineral extraction, which would include basically what Phillips company is doing on thirty-five now, sand and gravel pit. Um, it would essentially just remove it as a use from what it is currently in I two, as an industrial district, and put it in its own separate district. Um, the, I mean, that's the, that's the elevator pitch, I guess, without getting much further into it.
So what are all the attachments for that?
One of them is, there has to be, so there's a section in our code in general, um, number, uh, article eighteen that deals with the extraction of minerals, um, right now, that's what governs it. That needs to basically be amended slightly to say that those rules apply as a temporary use in, because it's still allowable as a temporary use in ag, I one. Um, so that section will control that use still, those temporary mineral extraction uses. But the more permanent land use of mineral extraction as in a mining pit will be governed by this new district and changing that language to reflect that, basically putting in some clauses that say, if it is zoned in this new district, the language from this new district supersedes the language in eighteen point, whatever it is. The other one is a rationale document that I typically produce for regional planning to help them understand the reasoning behind the zoning change. It's something that they request as part of their review process. Um, it should help to, um, you guys as well, understand a little bit of the rationale. I tried to summarize it, uh, just now, but...
Okay. Well, I just don't, I mean, for me personally, I just don't feel comfortable without being able to look at all this stuff, so, I mean, I could not...
Is there a...
If I may, I mean, it is, it is just part of the process. You, you see it again, it just, you're just recommending it goes to regional planning for their full review and then it comes back.
That's fine. I mean, I just, I feel weird recommending something that I literally just got today and haven't even...
Is there a timeline? Is there a hurry to the decision for this evening?
Um, uh, if we, if I don't have your motion, then it won't be able to come before you in November. It would have to wait until December. Um, there is reason to do this as soon as possible. Like I said, it is in response to what we know is an expansion of Phillips operations. So apart from creating the districts, we then have to go about rezoning the parcels eventually. Um, I'm not saying it's, uh, I guess, I would prefer if we could move it into regional planning for their review because what you are not, you're not recommending it, you are just requesting a review of the language from regional, regional planning. So if that helps you...
What do you guys think? I mean, did you guys have time to look at it all?
I have...
No, no, I've been in meetings all day. Um, I get the process piece. My question is the timeline. The, my question is the timeline.
Um, the timeline would move forward by a month because I need to bring it forward early in the month to get it into their queue, essentially.
And so postponing it, um, does that have a negative impact on the Phillips expansion?
I, I don't necessarily think so, I would have to say, but, um, it was made very clear that this was an imperative at the administrative level, so, um, that's all I will say. But it's, it's a high priority for us to, to get this done.
So when are you proposing bringing it forward next?
In November. We would have a review from regional planning accompanying it.
Yep.
Over here for a question? Just ask, when he was asking to bring it forward.
Oh, yeah.
Your members here are not prepared to, uh, to look at it, at the dust?
Well, I don't feel, like I said, I don't. I mean, I didn't even look at any of the stuff, so, I mean...
I answered it.
I literally saw the email I was getting out of.
I'm just...
How's it any different from any other thing that's brought forward to the commission? I don't, I'm not following.
Well, because there's more time, I feel like, for me to look over stuff and to understand what the whole process is and what we're doing, so. That's, I mean, again, just being, so.
Yeah. I mean, you, you'll make a motion and then you're, oh, I mean, that's...
Mm-hmm. So they bring it forward, we don't need a second, we just need to call a question?
No, I can make a motion that we present the, uh, uh, what is?
The M one.
You're so tired.
The M one.
I think this is just...
For regional planning review.
Well, I would like to actually have a paper agenda and I would like to, I mean, I'm just... I'm, like I said, it's not me, so it's a whole group of people, so I'm just telling you how I feel.
So I will make the motion that we submit the M one mining resolution to regional planning for their initial review.
In a second?
So we're gonna request that be submitted for their review before we look at it? Is that what we're asking?
That's what...
By law, that's what we have to do.
Yes. Okay, and after they look at it, then what's the next step?
It comes back to us.
Then it comes back to us. Okay. I second the motion.
We have got a discussion?
Any discussion?
All right. Ms. Horton?
No.
Uh, Ms. Stalter?
Um, I get the process, so I'm going to say yes, but I respect what Christine has brought forth.
Mr. Face?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Horton. That is all the new business I had for you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I need a motion to...
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Fucking U M A.
U M A on this.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.